Hello, everybody, and welcome to the Eureka City Council meeting, December 19th. We're glad you're all here. It's nice to see everybody. And we are going to open this meeting with, is there a report out of closed session?
Nothing to report out of closed session tonight, Mayor.
Thank you. That's out of order, but we'll have a roll call. Councilmember Castellano?
Here.
Councilmember Molton?
Here.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Here.
Councilmember Bauer?
Here.
Councilmember Contreras Deloach?
Here.
Mayor Bergel?
Here.
Thank you. And would all two care to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
(inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, again, I want to thank everybody for being here tonight. We actually have a really special treat during my mayor's reports. I'd like to invite up Peyton Ellis Studabaker, Amin Yang, Jordan Penn, Michelle Vorniky, and maybe Carla Young from Limited Edition Eureka High. Come on up. They're going to sing us a couple festive songs because it's the holidays and we love Eureka High. And just as a note, friends, we'll have them talk just for a moment, but they are raising money to go on a trip. So they'll talk a little bit more about that. You don't need a mic.
Yeah, we'll be fine. Well, good evening, everyone. My name is Jordan Pond, and I'm so glad to introduce my group from Eureka High Limited Edition. We are so happy that we are invited to be able to sing for you all. So we're here caroling throughout Christmas time and the holidays so we could fundraise for our trip to Fullerton to compete in a jazz festival. And so our first song today we will be singing is Deck the Halls, which will be featuring our solist tonight, Amin Yang.
The next song we're going to be singing for you is called Carol the Bells. It's a fan favorite and we've been doing it for many, many years.
Thank you so much. Would you tell us again how we can support your trip?
And can we get a group picture?
Well, during the springtime towards February, we host, we do Singing Valentines, where we do requests by people who are willing to donate for us to sing to any loved one or anyone they would like for us to sing. We do gigs where we can sing a request of one or two songs, and we also can give out a rose to that person as well.
Awesome. Well, thank you so much, you guys. You are awesome. And we'd like to get a picture with you guys. Oh, but first, Councilmember Fernandez has something to say.
I mean, I'm excited to get to the picture, too. Is there a particular repertoire? Like, what songs do you have for Valentine's Day typically? I just want to know how to embarrass my friends. Thank you.
That is to be determined, but so far last year, we've sang "My Girl," we've sang "Good Lovin'" and as well as "Unchained Melody" and "Dream."
I send them to my kids every year. It embarrasses them. Jesus, Adam, it's awesome. So thank you. But can we get a picture with you guys, all of everybody? That would be great. Okay, sorry. I know. The pressure's on. Local talent. Pretty fabulous, don't you agree? Yeah? Okay, so I have a few announcements. So I just wanted to announce that last week, or was it the week before, sometime in the last two weeks, we had our employee recognition dinner, and we acknowledged, the mayor acknowledged Robert Williams from Uplift Eureka, who has housed 91 people last year. 91 people he has last year. That's amazing, right? And then the city manager nomination and winner was Amanda, is Amanda Austin. She's an animal curator at the zoo, and if you've been there anytime in the last 20, whatever, forever it seems like, you've probably met her, so congratulations to her. Maybe not that long. And then council gave their award to housing specialist Raymond K. Ray, who we adore and love and appreciate. So thank you, everybody, for just being so amazing and being part of our great team here at the city of Eureka. I did a ribbon cutting, went to the Lighted Skywalk. If you haven't been, I encourage you to go. They, I served the alcohol and it was really good. It was, well, I didn't drink the alcohol, but there was cider and then they had mulled wine. Santi Salty Santa Parade, if you missed it this year, you got to go next year. They even had the fireboat this time and it was shooting water. It was fabulous. And they went, carry on. There was a Zumba-thon, Toys for Tots, and I got to be an elf many, many times for children, which is like the best time of the whole season for me. I just love seeing these kids, you know, being so grateful to actually get to sit with Santa and be with Santa and be with his wife and all of that stuff. So it's really an awesome time. So, and I've been up to a lot more, so if you want to know, you can check out on my Facebook page, Kimbergel, Eureka Mayor. But more importantly and most importantly now, we're going to take this moment. So a couple of years ago, a few years ago, we were in kind of a predicament in our city and, you know, our city manager reached out to a very special person, our now currently Chief Jarvis, who is now going to be retiring. And he has a fabulous replacement. That's not a replacement. He has a fabulous, we have a fabulous new chief successor coming. But I just wanted to take a moment. We have something for you, Chief. If you come on up. And I'm just going to read what I wrote, because if I don't read, I'll probably start, you know, blubbering. So I just wrote, you know, "It's been such a gift to have you in our city, Chief Jarvis, and I appreciate your humility, your compassion, and your dedication to everything good in our city. I just, it's a great loss for us. Like I said, we have a great successor, but we are certainly going to miss you for sure." So I wanted to bring this down for you and-
Thank you, Mayor.
Should I have them talk first or should I bring it down first? Talk, and then we're all coming down.
Okay, talk a lot tonight.
So if you'd like to say a few words?
Mayor, council, this is really bittersweet for me. I, as you know, came to the city thinking I'd be here for a few months to be an interim chief. Seems like yesterday, Mayor, you were swearing me in as a, as a mayor pro tem that night. And suddenly two years has gone by and I'm still here and I've just been honored to work in the city, to serve the city, this community, to work with this city team, all of you. And quite frankly, the men and women of the Eureka Police Department are the most dedicated, hardworking, tireless police officers I've ever worked with. And I've been so honored to work with them and to work alongside them. And that they brought me into their world and allowed me to hopefully leave a little of myself here, because my whole goal is to pay back what others had invested in me. So hopefully some of that has happened. But even if I'm not here in Eureka physically, and I do plan on spending a lot of time in and out of here, I will be here in my heart, and thank you all for the support and and the love that's quite frankly been shown to me since I've been in this community. So thank you.
Thank you. And I got it out of order, but did any council members want to say anything? You've thrown me off. I'm so sad you're leaving. So I got my order mixed up, but does council, do you have any comments? Anyone? Councilmember Bauer?
I'm sorry, you first. Go ahead.
I just wanted to say thank you. Thank you for helping to, for everything you've done. I think all of Eureka is trying to move forward, including the EPD, and you've been a key part in helping make that happen.
Thank you.
Councilmember Bauer?
Yeah, I just, you know, it's been a pleasure working with you, Chief Jarvis. You've, you've helped us get through some, you know, rough times. We had a, we had quite a spell there. And you did it with poise and professionalism. And it was just an honor to work with you and see our, our force become, you know, what they are today, which is, I think, something that we're all happy with, you know. So thank you, and I wish you the best.
Thank you.
Councilmember Castellano?
Thank you, Chief Jarvis. Like my fellow council members, it's been really lovely to have you here in Eureka. You know, I really appreciate how you are able to see the possibility in our community and really lift that up in your work. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
And thank you for your sincerity and just appreciation for being here. It's really felt like a great partnership and we look forward to, and congratulations on, you know, having, having some time. Enjoy that.
I forgot that part.
I am going to try to be better at retirement this time around.
Sure.
And, you know, I can go into retirement this time knowing that the Eureka Police Department will be in incredible hands.
Yeah.
Chief Stevens has been my partner since I got here. We have run the police department as partners. He, yeah, he and I have had a lot of great talks about the profession, and I know in my heart that every decision he makes will be based on what's best for this community and the people we serve and the people he serves in the department. So you're very fortunate to be getting him as your next police chief.
Thank you. Did you want to say something? Councilmember Contreras Deloach?
I'm the other weepy person like Mayor Bergel. So we'll just get through this, but I just want to thank you. It's been a real pleasure to work with you for this last year. And I know you're a very humble person, and so you didn't think that you were having quite the impact that you're having, but you've had a huge impact, and I've been really glad to work with you and glad you're here, and I'm going to cut myself off.
Thank you all. It's been an honor.
All right, did you want to say anything? Can we all fit? It's been a wonderful evening so far. So this is time for public comment. This is the time for members of the public who wish to be heard on matters that do not appear on the agenda. City council policy is to limit each speaker to three minutes. Such time allotted proportion thereof shall not be transferred to other speakers. The public will be allowed to speak concurrently with the calling of an agenda item following the staff presentation of that item. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the city council may not take action on an item that does not appear on the agenda. Do we have anybody here that's here for public comment? Come on up. Hi. You want to pull the mic down? Great, thank you. Welcome.
Okay. When do I start? Okay, now. Okay. I'm a resident of a local wellness facility, and I had seen on Optima a couple of programs about the Bronx Zoo in New York and the San Diego Zoo. And I thought, I wonder, I was wondering if about the, you know, Sequoia Park Zoo, how it'd be possible to go there. So on October the 5th, I called the city of Eureka and spoke to a female, you know, female voice, I think. And I was explaining to her that, that there are residents of this, of our care facility that would probably enjoy an outing to Sequoia Park and would also enjoy the experience of going on the Skywalk, even though we know only a portion of it is available for wheelchair people that are in a wheelchair. And so I, I, when she said, she asked me my email address, and I don't, I don't have an email address, but I said, well, you can mail me the information. And as soon as I said the word rehab, her whole, it just sounded like her whole demeanor changed. It was like she was thinking that maybe it was just a bunch of drunks and alcoholics who wanted to come and terrorize the park. We're not a bunch of drunks and alcoholics. We're a bunch of senior citizens who enjoy outings. And anyway, so that was October the 5th. October the 12th, I called again because I hadn't gotten a response. I got no response again. October 20th, I called again, and that time I was given the, an email address. So our activities director sent an email to which, as of December 19th, we have received nothing. My, my request is, on November the 10th, I called and left a message for Scott Bauer to please call me, and I got no response from that phone call. So, but anyway, there's been articles in the paper about the Skywalk, and there was a really nice article about, about Nani and Tuli, the two bears. And I'm sure the residents would enjoy seeing, being able to participate in this thing. My request is, there's apparently a form that you can fill out that, that will give you, if you're approved, which I hope we would be, to receive tickets to participate at a reduced rate. That's my request here tonight, is to receive that information, not necessarily for me, but for other residents who have expressed a desire to go to Sequoia Park. Thank you.
Thank you so much. You can also grab one of my cards downstairs.
I'm going to get her number. Yeah.
I got it all that way. Come on up. Hi, Judy. Your hair looks great.
It's short, yes.
I know. I haven't seen you in so long. I didn't recognize you.
I've never had a podium too low. I read the recent letter from EPOA, and I was appalled at the working conditions the officers of the department have to endure to ensure public safety. The job these people do and the level of professionalism they do it with is nothing anyone on the dais can do, especially those with anger issues, those who believe all cops are bad, or is it a job any of you would willingly do if it means being screamed at for the actions of another in your profession 2,000 miles away? Overtime is a self-defeating proposition. You're paying for one and a half people to get one person, and that leads to burnout. It leads to leaving for another agency. I tried to figure out a reason personnel in this department is down at 60%. My first thought was leadership, but I think we all know it's not the chief. Next would be pay. I compared salaries of other agencies from publicly available documents, and Eureka's right back where it's been before, behind other local agencies who handle less calls for service. Eureka officers deal with the fallout of being officers in the county seat with a council that values all people except for them and the work they do. I've given you a copy of Maslow's Hierarchy of Needs. It's shaped as a pyramid to remind you everything needs to be built on a strong foundation. According to Maslow, physiological needs first and then safety. All the way at the top of the pyramid, small and last, is self-actualization, where you will find art. Art is naughty need. Safety is. In the 70s, the call was for parity pay. If you don't know what that is, and it does not appear you do, parity pay refers to providing equitable pay or compensation to individuals with equal job roles delivering work of equal value. You would be extremely hard-pressed to find a local agency that works as diligently as Eureka does. While you provide a uniform allowance, have you priced uniforms to figure out if it's enough? Eureka PD's annual allowance is $800. One pair of uniform boots can be over $400. You need at least two uniforms to get through a non-overtime week, between $200 and $300 each. It doesn't include weather gear, hats, and a set of dress uniforms, usually wool. They wear out, get damaged, and need constant replacement. Officers also spend unpaid hours each day to maintain their physical strength and agility. When you are paying a $50,000 recruitment bonus, paying salary to put a recruit through a six-month training program, and then a field training officer program, and you still find yourself short of recruits, there's a problem. And please do not dismiss it with, it's the same all over. It's not because they're leaving Eureka to go to other local agencies. There are other local agencies that provide a retention bonus, and this might be something else to consider. I can't tell you to pay them what they're worth, because what they are willing to do at any given time is priceless. But you need to pay them in parity with other agencies and start valuing them as individuals, people, and the professionals they are.
Thank you, Judy. Thanks for being here. Okay, is there anyone else in the audience that would like to come speak on a non-agenda item? Hi, welcome.
My name's, my name's Carl Klarnar. I'm a member of Sequoia Park Ivy League. I'm also a volunteer at Eureka High. I'm removing the invasive ivy there. I also go to private residences for people that are financially or physically unable to remove their invasive plants. I'm here about a concern with working with the city at Sequoia Park. So in the northwest part of the park, there's a bunch of fruiting ivy. And that's the main way that ivy propagates. The birds eat it. They poop out the, poop out the seeds. So there's, there's some uncertainty about where the boundaries of the park are, and I'm trying to get permission to just simply go and knock on residents' doors so that I can talk to them about where the boundaries of the park are. And even if we knew exactly where the boundaries of the park are, I still wouldn't feel comfortable going close to somebody's backyard to, like, basically be in their backyard, even though it's in the park, right, to take out this fruiting ivy. So there's, there's basically no fruiting ivy in the park, except in this portion of the park. In about 10 to 20 minutes, I can kill about 2,000 pounds of ivy in a redwood tree. All you got to do is girdle around the, the tree, girdle the ivy around the tree. Everything above it dies. So I've been having some communications with Jim Thomas. Here's the totality of our correspondence. I know that you're all busy and don't have much time, are underpaid, et cetera, et cetera. But if you could look at this, that would be great. I've tried to correspond with him about this, and he just seems a bit confused about what some of the city policies are. He is quoting me the Eureka Computification policies and doesn't really know what they say. And so if, if you look at the documents that I'm providing you here, maybe you can help me out. All I want to do is knock on these people's doors. You know, I'll be totally professional and ask them, hey, do you mind if I'm in the park near your house? Where do you think the boundary is? Because basically, no one knows where the boundary is. So that there's no concerns and nobody gets, you know, bent out of shape about me being near their yard or whatever. So if you could help me negotiate this, this issue, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
I forgot to say I've done done over 400 hours of volunteer work on invasive ivy.
Thank you so much. Okay, you want to come on up? Welcome.
Hi, good evening. Thank you. I'm fortunate, oh, my name's Micah Starr. I live in Eureka. I work in Eureka. I'm fortunate enough to know many of you personally. I work with Mayor Bergel at the high school, council member Fernandez, and I have friendships between our families. I've been fortunate enough to connect with councilmember Castellano through our city's arts community. And I had the privilege to speak with councilmember Contreras Deloach, as well as Mayor Bergel, last weekend at an interfaith gathering in observance of the 75th anniversary of the Universal Declaration of Human Rights. I just wanted to say I feel incredibly fortunate to have a city council that's so dedicated to service, to openness, and global issues, despite the great challenges that we face within our community. I could understand why the council would hesitate to invest the time, energy, and resources needed to draft a comprehensive and thoroughly representative resolution on the Israel-Palestine war. When we have many immediate public safety concerns to address in our own city of Eureka, I would like us to keep in mind that our local issues, as we all know, do not exist in a historical or geographical isolation. The rising prices of fuel and food are a direct result of global conflicts, and this impact is felt most heavily in our remote rural areas, particularly within indigenous communities that have already faced centuries of government policies intended to create conditions of extreme scarcity. I'm also appalled by the hypocrisy of our federal government, who claims to honor and support the Jewish people's right to return to our- support the Jewish people's right to return to our ancestral homeland after over 2,000 years living in diaspora, when no such commitment has been made to the hundreds of indigenous nations who for the past 500 years have been continuously and brutally oppressed, murdered, forcibly converted to other religions, and displaced from their ancestral lands in order to establish the United States of America. And now I can understand also why many would have difficulty with the fact that so much of money is going away from this land to fight wars in other lands. I don't need to go too deeply into everything that's happening, but I just wanted to thank you all for taking the time to consider these issues. I know it's been really difficult to conduct these meetings and also be able to hear everyone, and so I wanted to thank you all for staying open, and also, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Micah. Come on up. Welcome.
Hello, yeah, I'll show my name in a minute. I was hesitating to raise this issue, but somebody already did, and I had written up a piece, and someone's going to take care of it while it's still in the news. Okay. So, "Last time I Jeffrey Harris was the only one who in person spoke up in defense of Israel. Was making the conclusion that Israel is locked in existential struggle with Hamas, and a lasting ceasefire must not be put into place until Hamas has been eliminated. In order better to relate to the current conflict, one needs to approach it with a perspective informed by understanding of the relevant historical context. Over the last 4,000 years, various settlers occupied this territory between the Mediterranean Sea and the River Jordan, which was once known as the land of Canaan. Now, early in the second millennium of the sea, the Canaanites have been establishing a society largely based upon pastoral nomadism in this mostly arid land. These were the people of El Yahweh, his concert Asherah, and his nephew Baal, symbolized by the golden calf. The 12 tribes of Israel then united to form the Kingdom of Israel, which divided into the kingdoms of Israel and Judea. These kingdoms were conquered by the Babylonian Empire, then by the Persian Empire, and next by the Empire of Alexander III, the Great of Macedonia. This empire fragmented into four successor states, out of which the Seleucid Empire came to control much of the eastern Mediterranean coastal lands, including Canaan. Then Roman Dynasty ruled next. Roman Empire conquered this territory, the eastern half of the Roman Empire became the Byzantine Empire. Note the Arabs and the Muhammadist successors made incursions to Canaan in about 636 A.D. They then established the Fatimun Caliphate 909 A.D. European crusaders invaded and set up the Christian kingdom of Jerusalem. In 1171, Saladin, a Kurdish military leader from Iraq abolished the Fatimun Caliphate of Egypt, and established a Ubud dynasty, a Sunni Muslim dynasty, also known as a Ubud Sultanate. The dynasty ruled in the late 12th to early 13th centuries, also over Egypt and what became Upper Iraq, most of Syria and Yemen. The Islamic Mamluk Sultanate of Egypt was next established by revolting Turkish slave soldiers. Then the Ottoman Turkish Empire conquered and ruled. After World War II, the British Mandate of Palestine took over the jurisdiction. In 1948, the stills of Israel came into being." Very well. "I don't see here in any of these 18 social and political organizations any mention whatsoever of the Palestinians. I see Israelis, Romans, Christians, yes, some Muslims, both Arabs and Turks, but no Palestinians specifically. The perm Palestine itself was a Greek word for the Israeli territory, and was applied to it by the Romans. Very much later, various Arabs occupied and settled this land. In 1964, the Palestinian Liberation Organization, a group led by Yasser Arafat and widely recognized as being a terrorist organization, was formed and began to call the Arab Muslims in this area Palestinians. The PLO renamed this group to purport that there was a coherent people and had a right to be liberated through the elimination of Israel. Furthermore, it has been noted that Palestinians have largely Jordanian and Egyptian last names, as many of them came from these countries. Hup them in the cuff, hup them aboard, coniam deus fault, abignia gladio, etiam dei volunt." Okay, so anyway, I've broken some Yiddish and Latin here, because the people wanted to get medieval about this, it's how they displayed last week. Anyway, I agree with Robert and Bauer, it's a very inappropriate venue to discuss this, but I believe they were coming from a position of ignorance and easily played, regardless of what venue of government they were seeking to make their case. Okay.
Thank you for being here. Is there anyone else out in the audience that would care to speak? Seeing none, we're going to head over to Zoom to Lost Coast Populist. Hi Ash.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can.
I just want to wish everyone there a Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, or, you know, a good time for those who don't celebrate anything, I guess. But, just wanted to talk a little bit about decolonization and decarbonization, because that seems to be a, you know, a goal of the global elite, so to speak. And just want to kind of ask people to think about, you know, if, you know, your goals or worldview align with these people, maybe, maybe think twice about it, because I think they have like a drastically different kind of view of what's going to happen as an end result of this than you might have. And for instance, you know, if you look up Bill Gates, you know, he's openly said that, you know, he's trying to, through use of vaccines, they're used to control the population, like to reduce it. And then we also have the, you know, the growing, you know, food initiatives, where they're trying to reduce, you know, carbon impact of beef, so, reducing, you know, beef production by 30% in Europe, and the farmers are over there protesting it right now. So you think, "Oh yeah, cows, you know, we can do without 30% of the cows," but what do they have in place of that? They've got lab-grown meat, and how are these produced? With, like, immortalized cells, which when you go and research these, they're actually made from like these, like, super, like ridiculously fast-growing tumors that they harvested, because regular cells don't grow quick enough to, you know, produce a lot of lab-grown meat. They grow at the same pace that, you know, animals develop, so it's, it'd be like, you know, just as fast as growing a regular animal. And then they also have the insect-based meats, the chitin is what the, you know, the end product that you end up digesting is, which creates like, what is it, like a kind of inflammation in your body, and which produces an autoimmune response if you, you know, ingest too much of it. So I really got to stop and look around us, all the, you know, say all the, the, I guess the trendy things that pull on the heartstrings and stuff, so you understand, the virtuous things, doing the, you know, all for the environment, all to save the world, but you got to look at what these people are trying to do, you know?
Thank you Ash, your time is up, we're glad you're here, have a happy Christmas, or holiday. Latonya?
Hi, thank you for taking my comment. My comment is in reference to the bus service, the Greyhound bus service from Buffalo, New York to Eureka, California. I hope it's just a rumor that there is no bus service from Buffalo, New York to Eureka, California. I have business there in Eureka, and I would like to have the option of traveling by bus. Is there someone on the council that could contact me and let me know how, let me know if it, just if that's an option? And if, so if not what I could do to try to make it an option. Like I said, I have business in Eureka, and I really look forward to getting back there, to seeing some friends, as well as taking care of my business. Thank you.
Thanks Latonya, thanks for being here. Would you send that in an email?
Okay.
Thank you.
Do you?
Sure.
Okay, I will do that.
Thank you. Do you see anybody else up there?
I see no one else.
Okay, so seeing no one else, we're going to close public comment, and move on to public hearings. So this is the Eureka Police Department Equipment Ordinance, and I believe that'll be Chief Jarvis.
I kind of feel like you've already said goodbye to me, so maybe I should call the commander or somebody.
Chief Stevens.
Put him on the spot. Thank you, Mayor, Council, again, Mr. City Manager, City Attorney, staff. This is a bit long coming, but we have a presentation for you tonight, just to move forward with this process. In September of 2021, Governor Gavin Newsom signed California Assembly Bill 41 into law, became effective January of 2022, and it gave police departments a little over five months to publish and create a military equipment ordinance. And in all transparency, we talked about it then, we talked about it since then, and it's still, through some transitions in staff and several different offices, it has not come to fruition until it was brought up by a member of our cop board, thank you, that it wasn't in place yet. So thank you for getting us kicked into gear with that. What this requires is the governing board of the city, city council, to create an ordinance that approves a police department procedure and policy regarding how we use military equipment. The term military equipment does not necessarily indicate equipment that has been used by the military, obtained from the military, or is even considered military-grade. Items now deemed to be military equipment are widely and regularly used by law enforcement agencies all over the country for a variety of law enforcement-related critical incidents, and include, but are not limited to, unmanned aerial or ground vehicles, armored vehicles, command post vehicles, pepper balls, impact munitions, tear gas, and commonly-used long rifles. I think a lot of us, when we see the military equipment, we envision tanks and heavily armed people marching down our streets, and it really isn't the case. I think the most common time you would see this in our jurisdiction would be if we had a critical incident where we required the assistance from the SWAT team. In Humboldt County, we have a regional SWAT team, which is led and run by the Humboldt County Sheriff's Department, and they maintain equipment. But part of this ordinance is that if it's going to come into our jurisdiction, that we need to report back to you, and that's part of something that we'll be doing moving forward. The chief will be presenting an annual report on any time any military equipment is used within our jurisdiction. But, you know, most commonly would be if you had an active shooter, or a known or believed to be armed barricaded subject, or an officer-down rescue, or hostage rescue, that's when we would be calling that equipment into play. You were probably all at an event where we had a lot of this equipment in place, and probably never saw it, but that was the Sarah Concert in October of 2022. We utilized drones from the Sheriff's Department, we, during our worst-case-scenario contingency planning, we had to plan for something terrible happening, so we had not only our regional SWAT team and their armored vehicle and associated tools and weapons in place, off-site, but close, we also had a neighboring county that volunteered to come up and help us, so we had their SWAT team and their armored vehicle in place. And, you know, simply as worst-case scenario, something major, bad happens, as we've seen throughout the world and throughout our country, that we're able to respond with a magnitude greater than the boots-on-the-ground officers who work in the event. So, it's not something that I anticipate really changing lives of anyone in the city, other than it could save lives of people in this city, and we will be completely transparent in what we have and what we hope to procure if that changes. Right now, as part of this, we have listed equipment that we have on hand, or that may come into our jurisdiction as part of a SWAT response. And Mayor, I'll turn it over to you for the public hearing, and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from council this time? Councilmember Bauer?
Yeah, Chief Jarvis, I noticed on their definitions, it has, number four, I think, is tracked armored vehicles, and we just have to define that, because I think none of us would ever assume we would want essentially a tank in our city, right? It just has to be in the definitions.
It happens to be in there. There is a tool that's utilized by some police departments, I haven't seen one in this region, but it is, it's kind of like a bobcat size, but it has an armored plate on it, so if you need to raise up to get into upper-story windows or things, it's a lot safer to do it that way, but it is a tracked.
Okay.
It's like bobcat size.
No, thanks for clarifying that.
Thank you. Any other, Councilmember Fernandez?
Under 10104.04, Use and Exigence Circumstances, it says that the police department would provide written notice of the acquisition or use of these type of items to city council within 30 days. Is there any reason that we couldn't provide that, or that EPD couldn't provide that report sooner, say 15 days or 10 days?
You know, I would say, Councilmember, it depends on what the event we were responding to is. There's also a room in there that it could be 90 days if it's an ongoing incident.
Right.
So I would think if it was an incident where the incident commander, the chief, felt that we had to use military equipment that wasn't in our inventory, or hadn't been pre-approved, that it would, you know, it was, the way it's worded is a good-faith belief that that equipment is needed. So I would think certainly if the event was concluded, that it could happen sooner, but it must happen within the 30 days, but there's nothing to say it couldn't happen sooner.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Councilmember Castellano?
Thank you for this. Are there any, and I appreciate that you, in the report, there's the description of both materials that are within EPD's jurisdiction, as well as those within the county, it's because there's so much cross-pollination there. Are there any plans to acquire or purchase additional materials over the upcoming year?
No, not at this point. We may need to replenish some things like pepper balls and things like that for existing equipment. And any military equipment that we had on loan from the United States military has been returned to them, so we have nothing on hand from the actual military.
And then, sorry, a couple more little questions? Okay. Some of the materials are actually, well, I don't know if you would call them de-escalation equipment, but, you know, equipment such as the pepper balls or sandbags, have you used those in a way that, you know, I don't know, I guess I can imagine that they would help prevent loss of life potentially, because they're, you know, do you see that, or anticipate that use?
They were classified, they are classified as less-than-lethal munitions. So, the hope is that we, if we find it necessary to deploy them, we are doing that in lieu of deadly force, and it's a force option that we have in our force matrix.
Great. And do you know if the county has a similar policy as this one?
I don't know, but I know that it has the state law became in effect that it requires all jurisdictions to do so.
Okay, I'll follow up with them too. Thank you. Okay. Seeing no further questions, thank you for your report. We will open this public hearing for public comment. Is there anybody here from the public that would like to comment on this item? No one in chambers, is there anybody on Zoom?
I see none.
Okay, seeing none. We'll bring it back to council for comments and a motion. Councilmember Bauer?
Now, you know, when I see things like the mine-resistant ambush-protected vehicles, the MRAPs, it's big, you know, I kind of like, who needs that? But then I remember what happened in McKinleville a few years ago with the active shooter, and the MRAP actually got the sheriff, got the SWAT team in so that they could, you know, take care of the situation. So it's one of those things, I wouldn't want us to own one because of the maintenance and everything, but I think as a community, as a community at large, it's kind of a, it's a necessity when it comes to, we have so many active shooter things these days, you know, I just, yeah, it's horrible, and, you know, it's like, well, do you need an armored vehicle? Well, in some situations you do, unfortunately. So, I was just thinking that when I was looking at the different things, and like, well, yeah, sometimes it's necessary, and that's unfortunate, but, but I'll make a motion, unless more discussion, to waive full reading, read by title only, introduce Bill Number 1033-CS in ordinance of the City Council of the City of Eureka, adding Eureka Municipal Code Chapter 104, Sections 104.01 through 104.08, for the military equipment use to Title IX General Regulations and adopt Eureka Police Department Policy Number 709, Military Equipment Funding Acquisition and Use.
I'll second. Great. We have a first and a second, are there any further comments? Councilmember Molton?
I just wanted to say that when I first saw this, I was taken aback, just the idea that we're militarizing the local police, but then, of course, reading into it, I just wanted to appreciate that this is a transparency tool, and that this is going to help keep, you know, public safety accountable to the public.
Thank you. Okay. Seeing no other comments, please vote. Thank you. Okay. Seeing no other comments, please vote.
I know it's not. One more try.
Councilmember Castellano?
Aye.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Contreras Deloche?
Aye.
Unanimous yes vote, motion carries.
I need a vote.
Moulton, Councilmember Moulton?
Aye.
Councilmember Bauer?
Aye.
Unanimous yes vote, motion carries.
Thank you. So, moving on to consent calendar, all matters listed under this category are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion pursuant to City Council Resolution 2011-22. If a member of the public would like an item on the consent calendar pulled and discussed separately, the request should be made to a council member prior to the meeting. Unless a specific request is made by a council member, the consent calendar will not be read. There will be no separate discussion of these items. So, I currently, F5 is going to be pulled. Is there any other item that needs to be pulled? No? So, can I get a motion to approve the balance of the consent calendar?
A motion to approve the consent calendar, minus item F5.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Unanimous yes vote, motion carries.
Great. So, F5, Chief of Police at-will appointment. Is this City Manager Slattery?
So, yes, as we, good evening, Mayor and Council, by the way. When, as we discussed previously, due to the retirement of Chief Jarvis, I have elected to appoint Chief Stevens. Chief Stevens has been a very longtime member of our police force, has shown very good leadership, a lot of respect in the community. I think that he's benefited greatly from the presence of Chief Jarvis, and I think he, in my opinion, is a great fit for our community, and I'm more than happy to welcome him, and it'd be great if he'd be willing to come up and say a couple of things for us. I'd be, that'd be great.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Don't worry, it's in BIC writing. It's just a lot of pages, not a lot of words. So, good evening, Mayor and Council. I am humbled and honored to stand before you tonight as the next Chief of Police for the Eureka Police Department of the City of Eureka. I want to thank each of you for your support. I want to thank the City Manager and the Assistant City Manager for their continued support over the years and their confidence in me that has brought us to this point tonight. So, thank you. I know there are friends here tonight in chambers, colleagues who chose to be here to support me and have supported me over the years, and I want you to know that truly means a lot, and I appreciate each and every one of you. As most of you know, I was born and raised in Kentucky. I moved out here in 1997. That is still where my parents, my brothers, my grandma, and other family reside. I would not be the person I am today if it was not for my upbringing, not for the way they raised me, not for the guidance and examples they set for me. So, I just wanted to personally thank them and tell my little mom. Today's my daughter's 21st birthday, otherwise she would be here. She's out celebrating with my son, so happy birthday, Co. And I want to thank her and my son Andrew for putting up with a stressful life in the last 25 years and all their support and love. Since the day of the announcement, my phone has been very active with messages of support, congratulations, and other thoughtful messages from friends near and far in our community. I have been stopped on the street and crosswalk and businesses by community members just to say congrats. This support and outreach reassures me that I am on the right path and to never take anything for granted, and I must work even harder now every day to continue to cultivate this and the gratitude and appreciation from the community. I am fortunate to be surrounded by some of the greatest ordinary people in the world, some of them that I've, most ordinary people I've ever met. I don't say that as a negative, but that is what the members of EPD are. We are community members, we are coaches, we are volunteers, we are parents, grandparents, we are just ordinary people. But when it comes time to work, time to don the badge, time to answer the calls, time to serve our community, and this is across the spectrum from our selfless patrolmen and women that are out there every day to our invaluable professional staff, they do extraordinary work. So, I thank them for that. They rise to any challenge they face, they navigate the hurdles of their positions, and they do it all with a level of dedication, hard work, and professionalism our community deserves. I am honored to have been given the opportunity to lead you, to continue to work alongside you, and most importantly, support you as we push EPD forward. I don't want to give away everything I'm going to say in my swearing-in, so slow down just a little bit. But I do want to make this commitment to you, council, City Manager, Assistant City Manager, fellow department heads, staff, colleagues, friends, the community I serve, and the men and women of the Eureka Police Department. I have given 25 years of my life, exactly half of my time on earth, to the service of the city. I have suffered injuries as a part of my service, both physical and mental, that I will have to live with and deal with the rest of my life. I share this with you just to reiterate that serving this city, serving EPD, and serving the members of my department, caring for them, putting them first, is and has been my life's mission. I have always been taught to leave everything better than you found it, and in every opportunity you are given, elevate your position and make it your own, and take it to the next level. As your next police chief, I will strive every day to carry out this mission. I will continue to lead from the front. I will continue to work tirelessly for you all, working to ensure our city's needs are met. I will continue to be an ally and supporter of each department within the city to help them reach their goals. I will continue to ensure we, EPD, are leading the way in policing, always looking for innovative ways to address the issues we face and will face as a city and a department. We, as an agency, will continue to work and stay ahead of the policing curve as it changes with the needs of our society and the profession. But most importantly, I will continue to put the members of EPD first. I will continue to work to create and grow our family atmosphere, continue to work with the city for creative ways to recruit and retain quality employees, make sure the needs of our employees are met, provide them the opportunities for growth, both personally and professionally, and support them as being the servant leaders to our city. Healthy, appreciated, and seen employees help create a positive working environment that in turn help ensure the highest level of service provided to each and every one of you. So, I thank you for the opportunity to say a few words. I try to keep it short. Thank you for everyone being here. I know retired Chief Douglas is in the back and others, so I really do appreciate just the support to come out. I thank you for your support, and I look forward to serving this city and this council.
Should we clap? I don't know. Thank you. Do we have any questions for Chief Stevens? Oh, we can do. Well, we haven't had public comment yet. So, we, yeah, we'd actually, if we have any questions? No questions? Great. So, we will open this item up for public comment. Is there anybody from the public who would like to speak on this item? In chambers? No? Okay. Is there anybody online? I don't see anyone.
I don't see anyone.
All right. Well, with that, we'll bring it back to council for comments and a motion. Councilmember Fernandez?
Yeah. I, I understand why we put these type of items on consent calendar, and I believe we should handle these type of appointments at least through a more open and thorough discussion, and so that's why I asked for it to be pulled, and I'm appreciative of that. In, in my discussion and the meeting that I had with, at that moment, Assistant Chief Stevens, I had the opportunity to talk with him and get his vision and his view of what public safety looks like in this community. And in that conversation, I feel that Assistant Chief Stevens has the deference and commitment to our community that would be a benefit, given his perspectives, and ensuring our safety and the belief in good of our community safety engagement team. And so, if nobody else has any comments, I'd like to make the motion.
You can make the motion, and we'll get a second, and then if there are further comments, we can have them.
Okay. Motion to confirm the City Manager's appointment of Brian Stevens to police chief and authorize the City Manager to execute an employment agreement with Brian Stevens to serve as City of Eureka Chief of Police.
Second.
There you go. Everybody's jumping. Everybody wants to second that. Great. So, we have a motion and a second. Are there any further comments?
Yeah.
Councilmember Contreras Deloche?
I just want to say, working with Chief Stevens, I appreciate that you're a man of integrity, but you're also a man of heart, and so I'm just grateful that you're going to be in this position.
Councilmember Bauer?
Yeah, I've got to know the future Chief Stevens over the past few years, and I have nothing but respect, and I know you'll do a good job. I look forward to seeing, you know, what the future looks like with you at the helm. And, yeah, I just appreciate you as a human being and as a leader. So, I really mean that, and good luck. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone down here? Councilmember Castellano?
Yeah, Chief Stevens, I'm just gonna, I'm just going with the new name. Yeah, thank you so much for your dedication to the city and for your years of dedication to the city. It's been a pleasure to know you and get to know you over the last five years. I really appreciate your sincerity and diligence and your sense of caring deeply for the work you do. It really shows in all of your interactions, when I see you out in the community, engaging with people, and your care also for your, the people you serve alongside, the other members of EPD, also really is clear in your actions and in your words and, you know, and what you bring forward whenever I see you. So, thank you so much for that, and look forward to knowing you in this new role in the years to come.
Thank you. Anyone else? Well, I just want to say, I just was having, I felt such a proud moment, such a bittersweet, it really is, but I too so appreciate you, Chief Stevens. I appreciate your integrity, your humility, a lot of things you guys have in common, actually, that I really appreciate, and your dedication to our city. And I've watched you over the years, and it's so nice to, like, kind of almost little way, a little bit, have a chance to grow up with you a little bit in this kind of, in our jobs, and it's been really fun to watch you. And I just appreciate your tactical skills and your ability to talk to people, all of those things. So, it's going to be amazing. I'm looking forward to great years to come. And if not, we'll call up Chief Jarvis and get him on you. Just kidding. Thank you. So, please vote if there's no further comment.
Unanimous yes vote, motion carries.
Great. Welcome. Huge appreciations. Okay, legislative action correspondence, and I believe we have a couple of things. Councilmember Bauer, do you want to go first?
Sure. Thank you. This was kind of a quick request from CalCities, who we're a member of, and I serve on the Board of Directors, the Taxpayer Protection and Government Accountability Act. You all have a copy of this resolution. This is essentially brought or funded, and the initiative was brought about by the California Business Roundtable, and it would greatly reduce our ability to generate revenue, whether it be through taxes or some other form of revenue generation. It would hamstring all the cities, and CalCities, you know, we represent all 482 cities in California, and it was a unanimous vote to oppose this measure. So, I'd like for council to, to support a resolution that says, you know, we're against taxpayers' protection and government accountability act.
Thank you, Mayor. So, this letter here was asked for us by the Humboldt County Growers Association to approve a letter opposing County Measure A, the Humboldt Cannabis Reform Initiative, I think is it was originally called, set to be voted on at the March primary in 2024. The reasons this may prove detrimental to the local cannabis industry are varied. For me, the concern is around the initiative's attempts to resolve what they see as issues, despite the best efforts of the county to work with them and coordinate around issues of environmental concern, as well as limiting permits, which the county has tried to work on them with. My largest concern is the limit to this, and that is an initiative attempt to amend the general plan of the county, which would, in some ways, circumvent the public process by allowing only future amendments by initiative. So, I'm asking that we, as a council, oppose County Measure A.
I have to abstain, just from nature of my work, so I won't be saying any discussion.
Is this time-sensitive?
So, in the discussions with HCGA, I keep confusing that with the other CGA, the reasoning behind this is for their ballot measure opposition language, and I believe they have to get it in before the end of January, and we only have one meeting in January.
So, is that yes, City Manager Slattery? Yes, it is time-sensitive?
Yes, according to them, it's time-sensitive. I didn't get an exact date of what their cutoff was, but when we discussed with them whether or not the 16th, this was something that they wanted to do. If council would like to postpone that, I could reach out to them and have that discussion with them.
So, actually, I see Nadalin out in the audience. Maybe you could come up and answer a couple of questions? Welcome.
Thank you. Can I just give a quick public comment, and then I can answer questions? Or do you have, I can be really quick.
A public comment about this?
Yeah, about this or specific.
It's, that wouldn't be procedurally appropriate.
Yeah, if you could just answer the question as to why this is urgent.
Yes, because, one, that there are, all, everything related to the voter guide needs to be completed before the end of this month, which is December 28, 9. And then voters, voting starts the very first week of February, and so in order to have all election materials ready to go to be distributed to voters, including mailers, we really need answers by the middle of January at the latest.
Okay, great. Thank you. Are there any other questions for Nadalin while she's up here? No? Thanks for being here. Okay. So, we're looking for consensus.
Think of a question.
Councilmember Contreras Deloche?
I am just very ignorant on this issue, and so I, I guess that's my statement. I just, that, you know, I talked with our city manager about it, and I did a little bit of reading up on it, but I just, I like, I don't have a schema for this, and I'm just, I feel like I, yeah, I have no schema for it.
Can I chime in?
Yes.
Just for a minute, Mayor?
You may.
It sounds like, based on Councilmember Contreras Deloche's comment and possibly Councilmember Castellano's comment, that it may be appropriate to put this on as an agendized item for more extended discussion on the 16th. And based on what we just heard, that might be timely enough, the middle of January, that's our next meeting. So, that's an option. If, if more discussion is called for or requested on this item, that would be my suggestion.
How do people feel about that?
If I've got two folks that are at ease and one that can't vote, I'd rather have a discussion about it.
Okay. So, then let's, so you're good with agendizing it for the January 16th meeting?
Yeah.
Great. Okay. Thank you. Are there thumbs up? Yeah, okay. And you're still, okay, great. All right. So, then we're going to move on to ordinances or resolutions. So, we're going to be talking about Myrtle Avenue Bike Lanes with City Engineer Jewell, no, City Engineer Willer?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Give me a moment here. I'll pull up my presentation. All right. Well, good evening, everyone. I'm here this evening to give a presentation on the Myrtle Avenue Improvement Project Bike Lanes. In particular, we're here because solely, not solely, but mainly because the, there's potential for a portion of the design of the bike lanes to impact a portion of parking on Myrtle Avenue, and that is something that the council approves when it comes to parking. So, that's, that's the impetus why we're here, but I'll give a presentation, give you some background, and kind of lay out the situation here. So, jump right in. We'll provide some background on the project. We'll talk a little bit about buffered bike lanes, discuss the parking situation, and then open it up for discussion. Project location, the Myrtle Avenue Improvement Project is going to be between Project location, the Myrtle Avenue Improvement Project is going to be between Sixth Street and Harrison Street, which is the, the limits of the city-county border there. In the center, you'll see here, there's West Avenue. That's kind of the main, main point of interest when it comes to bisecting this section of roadway. Project background, the project, the driver for this project is that Myrtle Avenue is, is up on our list of projects to be maintained. So the, the pavement is in a poor condition and needs, needs to be addressed. When we're doing a project like this, we always try to look at the underlying utilities to understand if there's anything that needs to be taken care of below the street grade, so that we're not going back in and tearing up the street after, you know, we get a nice pavement and striping down on it. In this case, we'll be replacing the water main between Sixth and Harrison, as well as doing some improve, some, some spot repairs to the sewer main there. Complete streets is something that I'll, I'll talk a little bit more in detail in a moment, but that's one thing we reviewed when we look at a project like this now, after a change to our policies here in, in January. Another kind of crossover with this project is we're, we're in the midst of doing our bike plan right now. So we're in that planning process. So we're looking at the street network. We're looking at different, you know, east-west and north-south connectors, you know, how people get around when it comes to our street networks and Myrtle Avenue plays a, a role there. And then finally, we had the opportunity to get some additional funding for the project through the 2024 STIP. So there's some additional funding that we're going to be hopefully putting towards some of the, those complete street improvements, such as, you know, some bike, bike lane improvements, crossings, intersection improvements, that sort of thing. So I mentioned that the complete streets was something we evaluated with this project. So in January, this council, I believe, adopted the complete and green streets policy. I've kind of highlighted a section out of this policy. I think it kind of summarizes a good intersection with what we do from an engineering standpoint when it comes to these projects. And I'll read that. "Under this complete and green streets policy, the city shall direct and design construction, reconstruction, repair and maintenance efforts on the city's roadways, bridges, pathways and sidewalks, creating a comprehensive, integrated transportation network that is safe, accessible, comfortable, accommodating and welcoming to all users." So with this policy, we now evaluate our projects that we do, even if it's a maintenance project, and see if there's opportunities there to incorporate complete and green streets elements into those projects. Here, I'll just give you a run, quick run through, complete streets. You can see there's a numbered section here in the middle. We have pedestrians here. We have a transit station in this location. We have a bicycle, bicycle user here. There's also motor vehicles. There's people using the streets for various things, whether it's eating or, or other, other things there. We see some work being done in the back. We see residences and businesses lining the streets, as well as the greening component of it where we have street trees, maybe LID features and other planters that help green the street. So those are all kind of parts and pieces of a complete and green street. A little background on, a little additional background on this area and why Myrtle Avenue is an important roadway. It's, it's considered a principal arterial, which means in our case, that's one of probably the few highest volume streets in the city of Eureka. Harris would be another one that has a similar amount of traffic on it. So it's a very, very high volume street, moves a lot of vehicles. So the red line is our project area between Sixth and Harrison. You'll see that we have geographically, we have three gulches that run down through this portion of the city. On the left, you have, this, this here would be First Slough or Cooper Gulch. The center one here is Second Slough. That's where the Beta Zoo Trail will eventually be connecting through here. And then this third finger here that extends out into the county, this is Third Slough. On this side of Third Slough, you see Myrtle Town. So Myrtle Town is a, a large part of the greater Eureka area. A lot of population that moved between Myrtle Town or unincorporated Humboldt County into Eureka. And Myrtle Avenue is, is one of the main thoroughfares to get in and around this part of the city. You'll see that we really don't have another crossing of Second Slough until you get down to, to Boone. And then, and then Harris is the next pass Boone. So Second Slough really is a, a physical barrier to moving, whether it's vehicles or bicycles or pedestrians from, from one part of the city to the next. So that's, that plays a role here in, in the decision-making process. So I'll talk a little bit about bike lanes on Myrtle Avenue, starting with level of traffic stress. Talk a little bit about the design of bike lanes, existing proposed roadway geometry. But first, a little excerpt from our bike plan. We did a survey during the bike planning process. And one of the questions is asked is if, if respondents would select any conditions that prevent you from bicycling to your desired location. You'll see here, the top three are high-speed car traffic, bikeway separation from car traffic and concern for personal safety. So those are the top three responses as to why people, you know, would, would not be as likely to go bicycling to desired locations. I bring this figure up just to give you an idea of the concept of level of traffic stress. Level of traffic stress kind of is a way to gauge how comfortable somebody is on a roadway when they're bicycling. So on the left-hand side of this, this figure, you'll see, you know, you have more of a family situation, you know, where a family might be willing to get out on a, a bike facility and feel comfortable doing it to the kind of the far spectrum. On the right-hand side, where you have somebody who might be more comfortable and aggressive in a, in a roadway situation, able to mix it up with vehicular traffic and, and feel comfortable doing so. How that level of traffic stress translates into design is depicted here. So you'll see, kind of flipped a little bit from the last diagram, but on the, on the right-hand side, you'll see kind of a, a low level of traffic stress. This is where, you know, folks who want to feel less impacted by traffic would be, you have more separation, hard separation between the bike facility and motorized vehicles. It's greened up. And as you transition to the left, you start to get progressively more and more, the bicycle is more exposed to vehicle tra, vehicle traffic. So you'll see, we have a buffered bike lane, which is considered a more, a lower level of traffic stress than just a traditional bike lane, which is the next square over. And then finally, your, your highest level of traffic stress is where bicycles are actually in traffic, in with the cars moving with them. Here's some, here's some examples of buffered bike lanes. So here you'll see there's the, the, the traveling, traveling vehicles and you'll see a buffer. And then there's the bike lane up against the curb line. This is a very similar situation to what would be proposed for one portion of Myrtle Avenue, where you have a, you have two-way traffic, where you have a bike lane, travel, a vehicle lane, a, a two-way left turn lane, another, another traffic lane and a buffer and a bike lane, just creating more separation between bikes and cars. Here's an example where there's delineators are included within the buffer. So now I'll talk a little bit about just Myrtle Avenue in general when it comes to the geometry and, and the project. On the left, you'll see a red, the red highlighted area is between Sixth and West. And that has a little bit of a different configuration because it doesn't have, in its existing condition, it doesn't have parking on either, either the north or south side of the roadway. And as you travel to the, to the east or the right-hand side, this is a section between West and Harrison. And this, this section of the roadway has parking on the, on the south side. So we'll start with an example between Sixth Street and West. This is the intersection of Myrtle with Cousins Street. It's kind of difficult to tell, but the, the striping has, has worn off to a certain degree. But we have roughly five-foot bike lanes that are up against the curb line, a, a vehicle lane, a two-way left turn lane, another vehicle lane, and then a bicycle lane up against the curb. This is what that cross-section looks like. Broken out in, in a cross-section form, sidewalk, you have bike lane, travel lane, two-way left turn lane, travel lane, bike lane, sidewalk. What we're proposing for this section of roadway is to add buffered bike lanes. This, again, this particular part of the street between Sixth and West does not have parking on either side. And there is some available lane with space with, given some of the wide travel lanes and the center left turn lane. This will allow us some space to create a, a small buffer, roughly, generally a, a bike lane is about five feet wide. And then we would have about a five or a, a three-foot buffer and it would look something along these lines, where you have the bike lane up against the curb and then you have a buffer, a stripe buffer between the bikes and the, and the, the traffic lane. Heading to between West and Harrison, this is where parking does exist in this section here. So here we'll see the intersection of Myrtle and Dean. What we have on the, the north side, that proportion part of your screen here is bike lane, a travel lane, two-way left turn, travel lane and a, and a bike lane, and then parking between the bike lane and the curb line. Existing cross-section looks like this. Again, the big difference being the, the parking lane on the south side, but also narrower travel lanes and two-way left turn lane through the middle. So there's, there's less space on this section between West and Harrison for doing anything additional outside of the existing bike lanes that are there. So one option outside of maintaining the existing parking and existing bike lanes would be to reduce the travel lanes in the middle, or clarify the travel lanes in the middle are already fairly reduced in their own width, and then reduce parking, which would allow, there's roughly a seven-foot parking lane there. And that could be split on both sides to create a buffer for the existing bike lanes. In this scenario, parking would go away, but it would allow for a five-foot bike lane and then a four-foot buffer, separating the bikes from traffic.
Could you go back to the previous slide for a moment, please? I'm just trying to look at the distances. Thank you.
Sure, yeah.
Yeah, no, no, no. I was just trying to visualize. Thank you.
So again, this is, this, this kind of depicts on generally what this would look like out on that portion of Myrtle. Again, you have, you have your, your two traffic lanes, a two-way left turn lane, and then a buffered bike lane up against the, the curb line. With anticipating that this could be a, you know, this could be a possibility, we wanted to go look at, you know, the impacts there if you are removing traffic, which means, you know, go do a, a parking survey. So we went out and started to look at different sections of parking along Myrtle. So there's four of them. Here's the first two. East to Sunny is the first section, starting on the, the west side there of, of West, not the west side of West, but starting from West, coming from East to Sunny. You'll see the occupancy rates are, are rather low and that's kind of what was observed by, by driving through. But when we did the survey, you can see they're, they're relatively below 10% from East to Sunny. From Sunny Avenue to McFarland, occupancy rates generally zero, except for this particular day, there was a couple, a few cars parked in that area. And then McFarland to Dean Street, occupancy rate averages somewhere 10 to 12% through, through that area there. Our survey happened in the middle of October and then we came through in the beginning portion of December here. Dean Street to Harris Avenue, occupancy rates were very low, very few vehicles parked in that portion of the street. So generally low occupancy, one of those things when you, when you're reviewing a project like this for complete and green streets compliance, you know, what are the things there, you know, as far as level of traffic stress that could provide a, a facility that might, you know, better fit the area? With low utilization of parking, that was one of the things that kind of brought this as an option. So that's, but it is only an option. So again, we looked at the complete and green streets policy framework. You know, generally as a city advances bicycle planning, the issues of available roadway width and bike facility design brings to light the need to evaluate compromises are rarely opportunities to add or enhance facilities without modifying or eliminating an existing one. So as we're going through the bike planning process, what we're seeing is, you know, that it's, we're a built-out city. There's not a lot of opportunities to create like a, a waterfront trail or a beta zoo trail. Those are, those are very few and far between. And so, you know, that when it comes to having, putting some facilities where they haven't been before or enhancing other facilities, there's, there's a tug of war, so to speak, of the, the area between the curbs. So, but that's, that's kind of the question here tonight is, you know, do we, you know, is, is, is there a desire to stick with the existing configuration without a buffer for that section between West to Harrison? Or is there a desire to look at removing parking and look at a buffered bike lane in that area? Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Councilmember Castellano?
Thanks. Thank you for your work on this. I have a few questions. Let's see, were there any parking surveys done at night, like when most residents are home, like after, you know, like nine o'clock at night? Kind of, I see that, it looks like it stops at 6:00 PM. Is that?
That's when it, sorry, that's when it started. That's when they went out and looked at, did the survey. It was starting at 6:00 PM.
Okay. Were there any?
So yeah, these aren't ranges. Sorry, these aren't ranges. These are looking at, for example, here on this date here, there was a 7:00 AM survey and a 7:00 PM survey. So it started at 6:00 AM, started at 7:00 PM and evaluated the section there. On some days, there was more, there was some done during the middle of the day. So 6:00 AM, 10:00 AM, 2:00 PM and a 6:00 PM.
Great. And we're talking, could you flip through those slides just so I can add up the total number of spots we're talking about?
It's about, I believe it's near 84.
Eighty-four, okay. Thank you. And then did, were there, was there any analysis of limiting the center turn lane? So basically, you know, I know on, on other roads, we've looked at, you know, basically saying you can't turn in the center turn lane. And so basically widening it out that way. So there could be maybe some areas where people couldn't, you know, go in the middle and, and you could keep the parking and the bike and expand the bike lanes?
Yeah, so the, the two-way, two-way left turn lane on this particular section of the street is really critical for the roadway to function properly, given the amount of volume of traffic that's on there. So if somebody, if you were to eliminate that, it would cause backups when it came to, like, if somebody wanted to turn onto a side street and cross all the way across the street and they didn't have a two-way left turn, they would just stop there, then traffic would pile up behind them. And it's a, it's a, it's a high-volume street. Like I said, it's probably the two, Harrison, Myrtle Avenue are the two highest volume streets that we have. So that'd be the concern there. You probably have increased collisions, rear enders, that sort of thing due to the, the backup there. It'd really, really limit the functionality of the street.
Okay. I think that's all the questions I have for now. Thank you.
Yeah. Councilmember Bauer?
Couple of questions. I'm, I'm cheating and looking at Onyx right now because I'm trying to figure out between West Avenue and East Avenue, you have the multi-turn, you know, basically people turning off of West onto Myrtle and there's two lanes that narrow to one. How do we have the space in that area to, at a buffered bike lane? Is that even possible?
So we're working, we're working with a consultant on, on that intersection in particular. The Myrtle and West intersection is, it's, it's easily our most challenging intersection in the city. We've looked at, we've had, we've done some kind of preliminary studies in the past to look at opportunities there to make that better. I mean, even like trying to, you know, is it, could you fit around about or, or anything like that there, just to try to understand what options were and it's challenging. So what we're looking at is, you know, what could we do to, you know, I think typically the way design firms who do this sort of thing look at is, you know, just better designating how bicyclists or cyclists would cross where cars are going to be in order to get them to a position where they could make, you know, a left turn or whatever turning movement they're going to make. But once you get to the intersection, it's a little bit different than having the set aside lanes. They have to join traffic and the, the challenge there is to, you know, provide the, the striping and, and signage in order to, to get them where they need to go safely. And right now, we don't, that, there's none of that that exists. So it would be, it would definitely be something to be a, a big improvement for that intersection.
And then if, if, and I don't know how like, if you're pursuing STIP funds or something to try and make this work, you know, can, would they accept it if, if we said, well, from Sixth to West, there's room, buffered bike lanes, that all makes sense. But from West to, let's say Sunny, you know, it's still the standard bike lane parking. And then from that point on, it's buffered or something. Would that disqualify you if you had a kind of a mixture of, of opportu, you know, of, of actions?
Yeah, I don't believe it would. Yeah, I don't believe it would. The way that the, the funds were applied for, in this case, didn't designate like all the details. There wasn't like a design that was, that went along with it. It was just a general description as far as the, you know, with the headline being, you know, trying to increase improvements for, you know, bicycle and pedestrians, intersection improvements, that sort of thing.
Okay. And then one, one last question. I was just thinking, and I don't know if it's been looked at. I know West is, I ride my bike and try and get to the trail from my house. I go down west and it's, there's no room for bikes. So I'm on the sidewalk. I'll be honest. But if I were to be going onto Myrtle, is there any way to designate like 13th to East? You know, like, hey bikers, take that route to avoid the intersection, get onto Myrtle. You know, I mean, is that something that we can do? I know, I know East is kind of a busy, a lot of parking on there, a lot of cars. But just as an opportunity to get people off the road and then they could hit onto Myrtle and then they're on a bike lane. You know, just something like that. Has that been explored?
Yeah, that's something we're working, we're working very hard to try to get in feedback from the community on, on just that sort of thing. What are those, what are those pieces? And when I say that, it's with respect to the bike plan that we're doing now. Because that network, we're trying to, you know, just pull as much, you know, knowledge, local knowledge from the city so that we can apply that into that plan and find those areas that we might be able to, you know, like, like you said, designate this area to be like, hey, if you, you know, here's a, here's an area you could get through here. Or here's a lower volume street that we could, that we could look at designated as a bicycle boulevard and those sorts of things. Yeah, there's, there's definitely things that we can look at.
All right. Thanks.
Councilmember Fernandez?
I, I would say that I'm definitely supportive of, of, of that thought, line of thought there. Councilman Bauer, those were the similar concerns that I had. Having biked on Myrtle when I first moved in here and not doing it again because it is a bit trepidatious. And so I understand wanting to have that buffer or even that traffic calming. But to eliminate parking in a predominantly residential area, I, I, I can't come to grips with, even though I understand we have a policy that we approved stating that we want to make these type of amendments. But that is a place that, again, having, when I first moved here, considered that area. But with a two-car household, it's like, it just doesn't work. And so the alternatives there, I really do support in that attempt, especially if we could say these areas will have delineators, these parts won't, or even looking at bike, bike route alternatives. That's something I've had to map out myself. So I would say I'm supportive of that if we can find a way to reduce parking, but not eliminate it entirely while still keeping bicyclists feeling safe.
Is that a comment or a question?
It's a little bit of both. What are your plans for that?
Okay. So do we have any further questions?
Was your, was your question, so you were specifically talking about 13th to East?
Yeah, right. Because it seems, as you, as you stated, because this is the time for questions, there is no parking along Sixth to Harrison, correct? Sixth and West, I'm sorry. I guess I'd wrote and I'd written that down wrong. And between West and Harrison, that is where the street parking is.
Yeah, so the blue section here on the map, that's the portion from West to Harrison where there's parking on the south side.
Okay.
So if you're mentioning the east to 13th, that's shown on the map here, kind of at the center where the blue and red come together. It's more difficult to see on that screen. Yeah, that's, that does, you know, provide an area for a short, you know, distance there of that portion. And that's something I think, you know, again, we'll be looking for those in the bike plan to identify as, you know, potential routes to move people. If you're heading from West and say you wanted to go onto Myrtle. If you're on Myrtle already, heading westbound, you know, crossing all the traffic lanes to try to get over to that area might be more difficult. If we have the signalized intersection is more laid out for moving traffic, moving bicycles through it. Which even if, so say that you don't choose to move ahead with the, with buffering the bike lane throughout this section, we'd still be looking at improvements to that intersection to try to make it more navigable by cyclists.
And so I know it's titled eliminating, or the resolution's titled eliminating parking on Myrtle Avenue from West to Harris. Then would we have to amend the resolution to make sure that we were considering these alternatives as we move forward?
I don't think you would move forward with that resolution if you weren't going to eliminate parking. That's really, like I said, we're here for the parking elimination portion of it. The rest of the project's going to move forward. And if that wasn't on there, there just wouldn't be buffered bike lane between West and Harrison.
Yeah, so the only reason for the resolution is if you're going to be eliminating parking. And if even a portion of that parking gets eliminated, we'd still, well, we don't, we could amend the resolution here.
I, I guess that's what I'm asking. Because again, if we're not eliminating the parking, but we're reducing it, could we amend the resolution tonight to reflect that? Or would this have to come back? Does that make sense? Okay, I just want to.
I'm going to say it really depends. I think maybe let's take public comment and then get comments from the council and kind of see which way we want to go. And then, once we know a little bit more about what direction the council wants to take, I'll be able to answer questions about whether it can be amended on the fly or needs to come back next time.
Okay.
Thank you. Councilmember Castellano?
Thanks. I'm enjoying these questions and thank you for your patience. So the link housing that's, that's planned and in process is going to be located between Sunny and McFarland, right? That's one of the locations. Would it be possible to put a bike path on the backside of that housing? It's a little speculative. Sorry.
I'll try to point it out here. So here's Sunny Avenue. There's this, this is a, a public, a city public lot here. And there's plans for link housing to go there. So this is privately owned up to that point. So I would assume if you meant like to have the, the trail kind of wrap around there and then come back out onto the roadway?
Yeah, I'm just wondering about, you know, I'm, I'm going with this hypothetical 13th, right? You know, and so a way of extending that, that kind of protected bike area would be to create a bike path between Sunny and McFarland on the backside of the housing. That would, you know, basically keep people off of Myrtle for longer. And it's, yeah.
That's a much bigger project. There's private, private property, right-of-way issues there. There's crossing Second Slue through this area here, where that's where the actual slue channel comes up here. And then, yeah, there's, there's a few complications with that.
Yeah, I would say even just the space, you know, for an alley is not going to accommodate vehicle traffic as well as bicycle traffic.
Okay. It's a beautiful idea.
So I would say actually, I've been on trails like that in Sacramento where they go behind the development. And it just, it's awesome because then you don't have to go on the main road. Advocating for that. I like that idea. Okay, any further questions? Councilmember Bauer?
And Jesse, I, I don't know if we looked at Second and Third Slue. If we're going to be digging up water mains and everything, did we explore those culvert crossings? I know the Second Slue one is this little tiny pipe. And I think it has a flap gate on it. And so just thinking of drainage improvements, sea level rise, fish passage, all those things, if that was explored.
It's on a list, but that sort of funding, when it comes to replacing a large, tidally influenced, you know, fish-bearing culvert, we would likely, so it is, like I said, it's on a list. We're, we're hoping to go after funding for this, for Second Slue at some point in order to look at improvements like that. There's a work on the tide gate, you know, to adapt to sea level rise. We have some plans to do some additional sea level rise planning that would, you know, take a look at this area in a little more detail. And then, but really with the funds we have available right now, there are mostly street maintenance, water and sewer enterprise funds for maintenance. And then the STIP funds, which is a relatively small pile of dollars, about $600,000 that will apply for bike improvements and, and other pedestrian and intersection improvements.
I was just thinking, just one last time to dig up, dig up the road. Thanks.
I wasn't, I was not planning to talk. But is it possible to use this, utilize the sidewalk since there appear to be a whole lot more bicyclists than pedestrians? I don't know what the regulations are. But the, if you are on Myrtle Avenue, on West Avenue, during business hours, traffic from say 7:30 in the morning till 8:30 in the morning is atrocious. And anyone who is on a bicycle and is going to attempt to drive on that road apparently is not out there very often because it is a nightmare. And to make a left-hand turn, a left-hand turn from West onto Myrtle Avenue, there is not enough room for the cars that are already there. And to have a signal that has three lanes of traffic and two of them are, one of them is for two lanes of traffic and the other two are for the one lane of traffic is crazy. But I just think it's, there is just absolutely no way of putting bike lane with a protective zone between West and the, actually the parking lot where the Chinese restaurant is. And that's mine. It's crazy.
Thank you. Hi there.
Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak. My name is David Hilligeist and I've lived on Myrtle Avenue near where it intersects with Harrison Avenue for over 30 years now. I am an avid cyclist and I've ridden this stretch of road on Myrtle nearly every day. For those 30 years, I commuted to the post office for 20 of them. I was before this board when they considered and subsequently implemented the current bike lane without restricting parking on one side of the street. And I find that that bike path currently works. As long as they keep the white line white. I presently have personal parking at my house up a single-lane alleyway. I have two spaces. And one is my truck and the other one is for guests. And there's only room for one guest at a time. If parking on Myrtle were, were discontinued, the guests and the service vehicles, we're talking FedEx, we're talking UPS, they would be forced to go looking for another place to park. The nearest parking that I can find is either on 15th Street to the south or Bay Street to the west. Both of those are two blocks away from my single parking space. And I'm certain that you would agree that it really doesn't make much sense. And I also like to mention that my alley parking, it poses a real threat. It's close to Harrison and Myrtle. People come around that corner at 25 and 30 miles an hour, even against the red light. So my alleyway, which services 16 different units, is very dangerous. So I have guests that refuse to come up and even park in that one space. They prefer to park on Myrtle Avenue. It's just too darn dangerous for them to try and negotiate that intersection. It's only like 20 feet, 30 feet from, you know, one stop sign to that alleyway that, that I live on. To replace the existing bike lane from West Avenue to Harrison at the, at the expense of the property owners, in my view, it's unreasonable. And it's really unnecessary. Okay. My hope is that, you know, you would vote no on this kind of a proposal. I need the parking and, and I'm not alone. There's a lot of people that didn't show up tonight. There's a lot of single-family homes. There's a lot of multiple-family homes. They have parking on holidays. They have parking when, when they have multiple guests coming for special occasions. This survey did not give you the really complete picture of, of parking.
Thank you for being here. Thanks for your comments. Hello and welcome.
My name is David Wagner and I live on 1220 Myrtle, right in the middle of this, of what you're discussing. And if you do eliminate no parking, you're going to, you couldn't have company because there's no place to park. They'd have to park at CVS parking lot or down at the 15th or Sunny Avenue parking lot and walk two or three blocks to come visit. And if you got no parking out front, if you got a plumbing problem or electrical problem, where are those people going to park? There's, and, and the lower part there, people put their garbage cans out there on Friday, right out in the street. So I think it'd be very foolish to do that. Now you're talking about a bike lane. You could run one if you, if you could run Sunny Avenue all the way through. But it only goes in there about three blocks and dead ends. They blocked it off. It used to run all the way around back to West. But there's, there could be a few options. If you wanted a bike trail to get through and around the intersection at West and Myrtle. Because I, I agree, that's not a very safe place. And when you neck down from three lanes to two lanes, that's not a very nice place either, right at East Avenue, which he, he talked about. But, and not only that, you got an apartment on the end of that block down towards Sunny Avenue, you got apartments. But I understand, you know, when they make apartments, they allow you to set, I mean, one parking spot for every apartment. But where, where no place for a company to park. And it's just a real bad thing. There is a, an alleyway behind those houses and it's called 13th Street. It's deplorable. It's just an alley, but there are a couple residences back there also. But right now, East Avenue is full of holes right now. So you wouldn't want to go that way. But they used to run through there just to dodge that light at West and, yeah. So I, I'm against this option. Thank you.
Thanks for being here. Hi there, welcome.
Hi. Thanks for having me. My name is Scott Willetts. I live on the same block as Dave, 1234 Myrtle Avenue. Owned that home for a dozen years. I oppose the removal of parking in front of our house as well because it will have nothing but negative impacts for my family and most of my neighbors. And I apologize if I'm going to have to speak pretty fast here because there's no way I can get all of my thoughts out in the three minutes that I'm allowed. And frankly, I think it's patently unfair that the city engineer gets to sit here for a half hour with his glorified presentation while we only get three minutes to make our case because there's a lot of points that need to be made. And I'm probably, excuse me, probably going to toss in a bunch of them here because one thing that really concerns me, I was at the, the, the only meeting of the Transportation and Safety Commission that discussed this, a very poorly noticed meeting, by the way, where only residents with homes directly adjacent to the curb on the south side of Myrtle were noticed prior to that meeting. They did remediate, they fixed that and they sent out a second letter after that meeting. But the majority of people that would be impacted by this across Myrtle and on the side streets were not noticed before that meeting. At that meeting, a bunch of us showed up to voice our opposition to it. Surprisingly, they went ahead and advanced it to council to discuss anyway, with the caveat that the resolution that you would be discussing tonight would include a robust discussion of mitigations for those of us that would be negatively impacted by this. I've yet to hear a single mitigation. And if you're asking my four-foot-eleven wife to pack her backpack with her laptop and her school books and all the papers that she's grading from the CVS parking lot across Myrtle Avenue to get to our house because I got the boat out and she can't park in our driveway, we're going to have a problem. There's, there's, I've yet to speak to a single cyclist who thinks that this is a good idea, who thinks that this is more important than parking. And what I think that we've got going on here is a solution looking for a problem. And I, I just can't see any way, in my calculations, that if you do the cost-benefit analysis, that the benefits to the cycling community would outweigh the harm that is being done to those of us who own homes and live in apartments along this stretch of road who are ultimately going to pay the price for this without mitigation because those aren't even being discussed. You know, I'd, I'd also like to know what other neighborhoods in Eureka that currently have parking adjacent to their homes are having that taken away without compensation so that it's, that can benefit this, this community of cyclists that we hope manifests because they don't currently exist. It's basically a field of dreams. If you, if you build it, they'll come. I, I haven't spoken to a single person other than the people behind the podium here who are in favor of this proposal. So I, along with all of my neighbors, asked- So I, along with all of my neighbors, ask you to just put this thing down. Leave the parking as it is. Thank you very much.
Thanks for being here. Hello and welcome.
Hi Mayor. Hi Council. Good evening. My name is David Long. I'll just read my letter here. Almost thirty years ago, my wife and I stopped at fourteen-seventy-nine Myrtle for a garage sale. This is on the north side of Myrtle, a half a block away from Bay Street. We ended up buying the home as well as a four-dollar English teapot. Our children lived there for college and had many get-togethers. Parking was never an issue until fifteen years ago or so when the city decided to remove parking on the north side to make room for bike lanes. This we've been okay dealing with, even with the necessity of crossing the busy street to get to and from parking. We had a wedding ceremony there eight months ago and parking was understandably difficult. Now the city wants to remove all of our street parking, which we considered a given when we bought the house. The closest parking will be a block away on Bay Street, which is a red painted curb for the first hundred feet. This is in effect taking real estate away from us that everyone takes for granted by being able to park in front or near their home in Eureka. Like you said, is there any precedent for taking away people's parking on both sides of the street in front of their home? This changes the nature of our home and it takes away the possibilities of easily stopping by with my truck and trailer, having gatherings like Christmas and Thanksgiving or having a garage sale. I understand the idea of making biking safer in Eureka with wider bike lanes. What's there now is exactly the same as the bike lanes further down the majority of Myrtle Avenue towards the east, which seems to be doing fine. I sat at the coffee shop by McFarland Street, the Tea Garden, from seven-thirty till eight-thirty Monday morning and counted two bicycles coming into town. Have there been any accidents involving bicycles on the road, complaints of safety issues? I would like you to put yourself in my shoes and imagine losing all street parking in front of your home and how it would affect your lifestyle. It's something that people taper granted as a right that everyone in the city has. Here I am coming in again to try to keep what I consider a right to have, parking. Is it something you would willingly accept without putting up a fight? I'm strongly opposed to the idea of losing parking on the south side of Myrtle Avenue from Harrison to west. Perhaps there are other options for making biking safer for that half-mile stretch. Some share the road signs, reduce speed limit to twenty-five, paint bike lanes like in McKinneyville. Thanks for your attention and let me speak in my opinion about the issue.
Thank you for being here.
Thanks.
Okay, is there anyone else in chambers that would like to comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it over to Zoom and it looks like we have Ash Teeter.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can.
Yes, Ash Teeter here, LostCoastPopulist.com, just weighing in on this parking situation. I'd recommend that you do as Councilmember Bauer said that he does when he doesn't feel safe, you know? Gets up and he rides on the sidewalks. And you could, you know, like someone was saying earlier, the city's already built out so you got space for so many things. And, you know, what you're doing now is you're encroaching on people who own houses and have, you know, had this parking for years and you're taking away from it as so many people before, myself, have made point of. So maybe you could, you know, there is already bike lanes in some of the sections. Maybe in the sections where it doesn't work, you could put signage up on the sidewalks, you know, legalize riding on the sidewalks and put signage up that directs bikes to one side, pedestrians to the other, on the odd case that they do interact in. It's usually pretty low traffic on the sidewalks. Maybe do a survey on the sidewalk traffic to, you know, look at that aspect also. But yeah, I'd just really, really look into the sidewalk thing because
Are you still there? I can't hear you anymore. There you go. There you are.
Sorry, I had an incoming call. It's gonna impact people's, it's gonna impact people's livelihoods. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ash. And the phone number is it thirteen oh eight? Yeah? I have my glasses on, I can see. So phone number thirteen oh eight. Hi, welcome.
Thank you. My name's Mary Ann Waters. Hello? Is somebody asking me a question?
No, you're good. Go ahead and go.
Thank you. You can start my time now. My name is Mary Ann Waters. I'm at fourteen-eighty-one Myrtle Avenue. And I am on the side of the street that already has a bike lane. I just, I want to share with you the impact of what that decision has done and totally support those who've come before the council today. The previous committee, I received notice of it the day of the meeting and was able to make it and was somewhat appalled at the fact that they moved this forward even though they were showing compassion for the many people that were speaking up here. We haven't, we had parking in front of our house. I, I own the family home. I bought it back into the family after twenty-six years outside of the family and I couldn't believe the difference when I moved in and could feel the difference, just the vibrations, everything from the traffic just racing down Myrtle Avenue. The reason you have a problem with bicycles not wanting to be in the lanes is because your traffic's too fast. Now, I totally respect and honor our police department and they don't have time to be chasing this down. I can't wait for there to be a roundabout, actually. So let's slow it down.
Did your phone die? Are you still there? She's gone. We lost you. And you have, does she have a few seconds left? Yeah, so if you want to try and call back, but we'll go with April right now? April?
Hello?
Hi.
Sorry.
Welcome.
Sorry, I dismissed the unmute notification. I apologize. Hi, my name is April Wheeler. I live above a business on the corner of Myrtle and Dean. My home was actually prominent in one of the slides, like it was right in the center of the slide earlier. I wanted to second that I didn't know about this issue until a neighbor knocked on my door last night and told me about the city council meeting. So if she hadn't done that, I wouldn't have been able to weigh in on this and I'm wondering how many of my neighbors also feel strongly about this but had no opportunity to speak. I'm also representing my downstairs neighbor who was not able to make it because she has a class. But as someone who didn't own a car for many years, I completely understand traffic stress for cyclists. However, where I live, the only dedicated handicap parking for my apartment unit is on the street. I'm an IHSS worker for my eighty-three-year-old grandmother and it's difficult to keep her from being homebound already. She had blood clots last year. And so removing my ability to park right in front of my front door so that I can help her in and out of my apartment would have an immediate impact on her quality of life, her health, and her social options. My downstairs neighbor owns a wellness center where she does massage therapy. I think she does a little bit of physical therapy. And many of her clients are also working to maintain or improve their mobility or are mobility limited. And so she uses the space in front of our building for handicap parking. So completely removing that parking would leave us dependent on the parking lot on the side of the building, which is probably not to code. It's completely gravel. The first three spaces are only half a car length in deep. So if someone were to turn from Dean, from Myrtle onto Dean, we kind of joke that like somebody is gonna get T-boned if they park in those spaces. So we're very concerned about losing the street parking on the corner of Myrtle and Dean for our building. As another person pointed out with the surveys, I don't get home until six PM. So any surveys that were conducted before that would not have seen my vehicle. But if you look on Google Maps, you'll see it there for the past ten years. It's a little blue beetle and it's there all the way back to 2012. Because of the traffic light on Harris, traffic on Myrtle from Dean is so congested in the morning when I leave for work that without that turning lane, often I would not be able to get out onto Myrtle. So any construction that's going to make it harder
Thank you, April. Your three minutes are, your three minutes are up, but we appreciate you being here. You're great. Two-two-three-nine, phone number. Two-two-three-nine? Are those numbers right? Okay. We'll move on then to Latonya.
Hi, yes, thank you.
Hi, welcome.
My comments are strictly from a rider of the public transit system. Usually when there's construction, it affects the routes for the transit bus. I just wanted to reiterate how important it is that the bus company be kept abreast of the construction schedule so that they can let the riders know about the route if there's going to be a change to the route. Because I think the purple goes that way and the, I think that's, the purple on another bus goes that way. But anyway, I just want to make sure that during the planning phase that the bus company be kept in the loop so that the bus riders will know how to proceed. The bus routes, the bus stops are few and far between as it is. And I, I just know it's gonna be something to catch the bus and the green, to catch the bus and knowing where you have to go, if you have to go to an alternate location, just to know ahead of time would be very helpful. Thank you.
Thanks, Latonya. And we've got Dee Nino.
Hi, I'm Donald Nino.
Hi, welcome.
Thank you. I'm at twelve-thirty-two Myrtle Avenue and I just want to echo my support for all the other speakers that the impact would be very detrimental and that this is really, there is a non-existent bike community that you're talking about. So I just want to echo that, that this all seems very unnecessary and that the existing lanes that we have are adequate for that type of traffic now. Certainly the traffic should be addressed, but I think making bike lanes and taking away parking is simply not very practical for this location. Thank you.
Thank you. Patty?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hey, I'm hoping that your engineer can actually answer my question right now. Can you tell me how many people took the bicycling habits survey? I see your percentages, but I don't see how many people actually took that survey. Can he answer that question?
We'll get that answer for you, Patty, and text it to you or email it to you.
Okay, well, it's important to know. I do want to share with you guys a couple things I'm taking away from this. All those Myrtle Avenue residents aren't saying anything that everybody else, like on the H and I meetings that happened five, six years ago, we're hearing the same thing over, the same kind of lack of communication, the meetings, the, the, oh, we sent it, oh, oops, we didn't send it to everyone. It seems to be a consistent pattern with the city of Eureka right now, the way you're informing the community of these really important projects. Anyway, we have our own survey going on and this is what's important when your city does a survey. You need to give us how many people have taken the survey. No, just give me the data. I want all of it. Because really what he just showed me, you could add ten people participate in that, we don't know. But we have our own survey and I want to tell you right now, we have three hundred and thirty-nine responses. I'm only gonna give you two questions or two things that we asked. There are several more and we'll get to those at other meetings, but I think this speaks volumes. The question is, do you ride a bike as a primary form of transportation in Eureka? Three hundred and twenty-nine people responded no. Ten people responded yes. That is ninety-seven point one percent people in Eureka saying they don't ride bikes as primary transportation. Next question, would you consider riding a bike as primary form of transportation in Eureka? Three hundred and thirty-nine people answered this. Ninety point nine percent responded no. Nine point one percent responded yes. Those are huge numbers and I don't think you're listening to the community. I think you are listening to your small stakeholder bike community and I think the voices are gonna get louder and louder. I will be presenting four hundred and forty comments that are in our survey that are pretty powerful. And if it, you know, if I have to do it at six meetings or whatever it takes, I'll be the voice for these four hundred and forty people because it's time to start listening to your community. Thank you.
Thanks for being here, Patty. Seeing no one else, do you see anybody else? Did those phone numbers come back? No? Okay, so seeing no other comment, I will bring it back to council for comments and I see Councilmember Bauer's hands up.
I got a lot to say, but first of all, I think everybody that has come here has called in to express your, and voice your opinion. We do appreciate it and we do listen. I want to say that our city engineer is, is doing the bidding of the city. And so we, when we develop something like the complete streets policy, it's not the city engineer advocating for that, okay? So I think it's important for the public to understand that. Don't need to go after staff. It's really what the policy that we developed, where we hope to do complete streets, where it's possible, where it's, you know, makes sense. It's, it's something we try to do. It doesn't mean that it's what we're gonna do, but it's something we're gonna try to do. So it's important to understand that, that no one here has their minds made up. This is a resolution advanced by a committee of citizens of Eureka. So all those things are in play. And, you know, it's, I totally understand. I think, you know, in this situation, it's more of a challenge, at least my opinion, to, to implement what we would like to do, which is provide safe travel for all citizens. But to me, understanding that, it, it makes it hard for a lot of people who live on that street who, you know, have needs like parking. So, you know, it, I had come up with some ideas, like how can we massage this into being, you know, sections have no parking? But right now, from, from the discussion and what we're looking at, I just don't see how it's even possible to do sections, like, you know, remove parking because there is needs. And, you know, I personally biked that route. My wife and I do sometimes. She rides it way more than me and, you know, I've never had an issue, never felt unsafe. You know, and I've also mitigated, and I think that was a comment, you know, I've mitigated my feelings of being safe by taking an alternate route to avoid that intersection, you know? So if people understood that, they can mitigate, you know, their, their riding too. But this situation, I'm having a hard time supporting the resolution.
Thank you. Councilmember Castellano?
Okay, I think other folks have comments too. Let's see. I thought of a funny pun. This is where the policy meets the road. But, sorry, I couldn't help it. But, you know, and so I just want to say, I appreciate this exercise of democracy, right? Where, you know, we, council creates policies in preparing for the future and preparing for, you know, reducing our carbon footprint and building community. And then we apply that policy and sometimes, right, there are rough places where, you know, we have to exercise change or exercise like articulating, you know, nuance within that policy. And so I really want to appreciate staff for like doing what you work so hard to do, which is interpret, you know, the policy we put forward and bring them back to us so that interpret, you know, the policy we put forward and bring them back to us so that we can see how they're exercised in, you know, in the real world, in the community, as, you know, our community is constantly in a state of change. Um, that being said, I do, you know, agree with Councilmember Bauer that there's some sensitivity here, and, you know, I really appreciate the folks who live in this part of the community, because it's a, it's a hard place to live and have a sense of community, right? Because you have, you know, all of these truck cars going through, you know, through your neighborhood every day. You want to have friends come over, you want to have, you know, a social life, right? And then, you know, you're, you're constantly having to buffer these impacts of the, the busyness of the road. I do appreciate the, the caller who mentioned slowing traffic there, I think that that uh would do a lot to um you know, make bicyclists sa- feel safer too, um, I'd be curious to explore that. I also think uh, you know, those, I know there's a word for them, those bumps, you know, that, that were, would a car drives like over into the bike lane, it makes a sound.
Turtles.
Rumble strips.
Rumble strip, thank you. Yes, rumble strips or something like that could, could benefit. And, you know, in terms of uh moving forward, um, you know, I like, I've biked a little bit in Vancouver area where there's kind of an interesting balance between taking, you know, kind of backroads um through neighborhoods that then rejoin with larger kind of arterial roads. And so I think that's something that might be worth exploring in this particular area. Um, I understand that we're kind of up against maybe some funding questions, uh, you know, and I'm curious if okay, no, okay, great, thanks. Um, so anyway, I, I would love to see some of these just like smaller safety types of things be implemented that would make the current bike lanes feel safer. While we maybe explore um a more circuitous uh route that might create just different opportunities for a more, a really uh, a, a, a bike experience that really uh had fewer impacts on the, on the, that intersection with cars.
Councilmember Conchera Stiloch?
Yeah, I, I think I, that's where I'm at as well, when we were going over this and kind of looking at it, I think um my grandmother actually used to live off of that street, and even back then, it didn't have a, parking was challenging, and so um, yeah, I think if we, I didn't know what they were called either, and I asked my, neither of us knew what they were called, I, thumpity bumpities, turtles, whatever those little.
There's truncated domes and then there's.
Truncated domes.
But there's also the rumble strips.
Rumble strips and truncated domes.
Really loud for neighborhoods.
Okay, so um, not thumpity bumpities, got it. Okay, so um, I, I think if we could do something like that, you know, or something that's kind of you know, that just like you were saying, Councilmember Castellano, that kind of gives us like something added, you know, a little bit of safety and just kind of um, but preserves uh that off-street parking.
Okay. Councilmember Uden? Fernandez?
I think in my earlier comment slash question, I had uh had stated that I would be amenable to, to alternative. Yeah.
Who's next?
Amenable to, to alternatives here, and it sounds like we need an alternative. Um, you know, looking at the Google Maps, it, you know, if it's, if it's an issue of safety or trying to, again, provide some sort of buffer uh, those, those rumble strips, and I believe it was in a previous council meeting where we were told that that's not really the practice anymore. Uh, but there is a way to at least highlight that there is uh a separation between the bike lane and that, whether we paint the entire way green. Or, or at least what I was looking up and researching are uh these um kind of like plastic type barriers in between called armadillos that would provide some sort of, yeah, look them up. I'm seeing some confused faces. Um, but, but they have that kind of uh reflective material as well that uh provide that sense of at least security to some extent, so. Yeah, you thought I made it up, okay.
So are there any further comments for council? Is there anybody that would like to make a motion? Councilmember Fernandez?
I, i- it seems like we're not ready to at least move forward with this resolution, so would we be giving direction at this point or just let it?
There's no need for direction, it would just move forward with the uh, the paving project as, as planned, without um any changes to the existing conditions.
Could we highlight those conditions that we just, or at least that I put out there, where it's like, maybe we do paint that green, so that way it's that designated bike zone that at least, again, you have that.
I would say, and I can probably defer to City Engineer Willer, but I think that would be a funding question, and whether or not the funding would cover whatever those improvements are.
Or the aforementioned armadillos.
Uh, some of the, you know, I guess, yes, there are things we can do to highlight the bike lanes. Um, I think uh some of the things you mentioned, like armadillos and that sort of thing, when you have parking on one side of the bike lane, um, it makes it uh challenging to get into the parking stall if you have, you know, bumps that are, you know, certain height. But no, there are certainly things we can look at to highlight the bike lanes, um, more so in that section um between West and Harrison.
Is that something we need to request tonight then in the form of a motion, I guess is what I'm trying to ask.
No, that, that, we're here tonight about the parking portion of it, and that really came back to, you know, buffered bike lanes, that separation, um, so outside of that, no, we can.
Okay, thank you.
So what I'm hearing is that this is dead and that parking will remain on Myrtle Avenue. Is that what I'm hearing? So, great, so we'll close this item out, and we're gonna take a at least five-minute bio break, I mean, break, five-minute break. Director Millar?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council.
Good evening.
Uh, the title of tonight's report is the twenty fiscal year 2223 budget review. Uh, around this time of year, uh typically, the, myself and the accountants have uh gotten very close to closing the books. Uh, we have a time period from the end of the prior fiscal year until the end of September, where we are still recording uh entries that have to do with the previous fiscal year. So because we are far ahead in our efforts to close the books, I am comfortable reporting on um the, what would be considered the actual numbers for fiscal year 2223. So in this presentation, uh, we're gonna begin by looking at uh revenues and expenditures in the general fund. Uh, we will look ahead at um some uh large or material expenditures headed our way. We'll talk about fund transfers and then the 2024 participatory budget program. So beginning with revenues in the general fund, so we're gonna start by looking at a pie chart. Um, this is a good way to understand the relative size of different revenue categories within the general fund. So this pie chart represents about $42.4 million, uh, that's how much revenue the general fund received in fiscal year 2223. So just under 80% of that revenue came from taxes. Uh, about 4% came from franchises, license and permit fees. Uh, under 1% came from fines and penalties. Uh, we received about 10% of revenues in the inter, intergovernmental category. Uh, these are monies received from other government agencies, uh typically in the form of grant monies. Uh, then we have charges for services. So every year, the city adopts a fee schedule, uh, these are charges for services that uh departments provide to the public. Uh, essentially, that comes back in as revenue to cover costs, and that represents about 6% of city revenue or general fund revenues. And then we have a miscellaneous category that's about 1% of the total. Uh, because tax revenues are such a big piece of the pie, I want to kind of dive in a little bit further. So about 64% of all revenues in the, the general fund um come from sales tax. About 8% from transient occupancy tax or bed tax. Uh, 7% from property tax, and then we have some small taxes like business license tax that make up less than 1%. So here we can see how the actual numbers compared to the budget. On the left, you have those different categories that were displayed on the pie chart. You have the current budget, that was what was adopted at mid-year uh in early 2023. You have the actual numbers, so what we ended uh September, June 30th, 2023, uh, the total. And then a comparison, um, here parentheses show uh coming under budget and positive numbers show uh that we received more money than anticipated. So bottom line, uh, we ended the fiscal year 2223 with about $700,000 in additional revenues than what was uh projected in the mid-year budget. Um, when we look at why there was a variance uh in this category, charges for services, we received just under half a million dollars more than what we anticipated. Uh, about 300,000 of that came from the zoo, so between zoo admissions and zoo membership fees, uh, we collected about $300,000 more, uh, which is great news. Uh, in this intergovernmental category, uh, there was a relatively large variance. Uh, you know, it's hard to predict when we will receive um grant monies. And typically, grant monies are reimbursements, so we spent the money in the past, we then build a grant agency, and then we receive the monies. Um, it's not uncommon to um incur the expense in a prior fiscal year and then receive the monies in the future. Um, so about 400,000 of that was grant from grants, and then 160,000 came from the Humboldt Bay Fire JPA as a re- reimbursement for a fire engine. Uh, we, the JPA holds a capital reserve fund, so we pay the bill and then they reimburse us. Uh, franchises, licenses and permits. Uh, you know, the main driver in this category is uh the franchise for gas and electric. Um, I believe gas and electric rates went up uh over the past couple of years, and that translates into more um franchise fees. And then in the largest category, taxes, uh, we saw um this category come in um less, or about half a million dollars less than what was expected. Um, so this is not uncommon in this category, uh, based on the different tax revenues we have. Um, because it is a large sum of money, uh, half a million dollars is not a large variance compared to the $30 million budget. Um, we have been seeing some of our sales tax revenues soften in the recent, uh, over the last couple of years. Um, during the pandemic, ironically, we saw a boom in sales tax dollars. So it's not uncommon to go through um ups and downs. So I think we're uh, we peaked in fiscal year 2122 and we're coming down. Um, when you look at the comparison between fiscal year 2223 and fiscal year 2122, uh, you can tell that um well, let's start with property taxes. So this is a great revenue stream because it uh almost never goes down. The way property taxes work is that they're um kind of, they don't grow a lot, but they base, because of Prop 13, they don't go down. Uh, you know, values have gone up uh in the past couple of years, so we have seen a um greater than average increase. Um, but unfortunately, uh, total property taxes don't make up a significant portion of the budget. So even though they were up about $85,000 in 2223, it doesn't really uh change the overall picture in this category, it's really sales tax and then uh TOT that have made a big impact. So these are considered consumption taxes, uh, so these are based off um people going out and spending money. A lot of times, these tax revenues are going to correlate with the overall economy. So this is kind of telling us that um, you know, at least in our local economy, that uh things have kind of slowed down a bit in terms of, of, you know, spending at local stores. Um, you know, overall, it is, those are some large numbers. Uh, the bottom line is that between those two fiscal years, we lost just under $900,000 or about 2.5%. Um, that is cause for concern, but it's not uh, no reason to panic. Um, this is not unusual, and we will certainly survive uh this fiscal year. Um, so jumping into the other side of the equation are expenditures. Uh, again, here's a pie chart that shows you the different categories. Uh, in 2223, we spent just under $41 million. Uh, the largest category is personnel costs, so this represents uh the salaries and benefits of city personnel. Uh, materials and supplies are a relatively small slice, about 2%. Um, outside services, so monies we um use to pay for consultants and to pay PG and E bills for electricity. It's about a quarter or 23% of the budget. We have this miscellaneous category at 2%. Cost allocation, so that's essentially um some departments uh serve other departments, and cost allocation is the way that we distribute those costs. Capital outlay, these are larger um purchases for uh tangible items. Debt service, so that payment for that fire engine is in this category, it's less than 1%. And then transfers, so transfers are monies uh going from the general fund to other funds for um purposes such as street improvements or street projects, uh, as well as subsidies to other funds. So again, uh, same schedule. Uh, when we look at the bottom line, uh expenditures came in at about $600,000 more than expected. Uh, I will skip this category because I will speak about it more later in the presentation. Uh, capital outlay, um, so this is the largest variance, um, it's a little misleading. Uh, what happened was that we changed the budget at mid-year, and then after mid-year, we added or appropriated about $375,000 uh for the purchase of uh property on Sunny Avenue. Um, you know, this is a unique purchase because typically when we spend money, uh, it's uh uh, there's, it's consumed. Uh, in this case, um, the property itself is worth or has a value, so this is actually going to go on the books as an asset. Uh, but as you can see, that ver- true variance is about $300,000, and there's not one main driver. Um, we had park and trail repairs that cost 35,000, um, some visitor, visitor center improvements uh for 25,000. Zoo improvements for 27,000, office remodels, uh, some unanticipated expenses from grants. So it was just a um, a long list of different items that caused that variance. Uh, next, we have outside services. So part of that had to do with the increase in electricity costs. Um, we did not budget well for the, those line items, um, that came in about $130,000 more than what we had anticipated. And then I mentioned that fire engine payment. Um, so typically, what has happened in the past is that we, we have a line item uh that captures the cost of the Humboldt Bay Fire JPA's operation or our portion of the operation. And what I've done was essentially reduce that by the same amount of that lease payment. Um, but I feel that it's probably better to um adjust that line item to their actual uh cost of services. So that's why you see uh in addition to that line item for the same value as that lease payment. Um, so that was another 160. And then personnel, so we saw uh personnel costs come under by just under 300,000. Uh, most of the salary savings was in the police department and dispatch, uh, but we did see a lot of savings across multiple departments and divisions. Uh, so when we compare revenues to expenditures, uh, you can see revenues coming in about 1.7% higher than expected and expenditures uh about 1.6 more than expected. So ultimately. So ultimately that difference resulted in a slightly higher surplus than what we had anticipated. So at mid-year, we projected about a surplus of about one point four million. And then ultimately that grew to uh, one point four seven million. Uh, so we saw an additional seventy-five thousand dollars come into uh, fund balance. So looking ahead, uh, so I were to summarize the current situation, I would say that uh, so what's good is twenty-three, twenty-four has a balanced budget. Uh, we're no longer uh, running large surpluses, but it is balanced. Um, reserves because of that surplus, that one point four million in twenty-two, twenty-three, uh, reserves are healthy and within policy guidelines. Uh, but unfortunately, sales tax revenues are down. And because they're such a big piece of the pie, this is something that we should pay attention to and be aware of. Um, we don't know what will happen in the future, but I believe they're likely to uh, be flat, if not down a little bit. Um, before they recover into the fu- or in the future. Uh, this is important because um, of what's coming down the road. So we have union negotiations, so we have three different MOUs, uh, one will expire at the end of twenty-twenty-three. Uh, two others will expire at the end of the fiscal year. So these will likely result in some sort of cost increase to the general, general fund. Uh, we have a new corp yard, um, or we are planning for a new corp yard. So uh, back in November, we saw, you know, how significant those costs will be. Uh, we have a lot of facility maintenance, so we did a study back in two thousand nineteen that identified about thirty-plus million in deferred maintenance. Uh, we would, uh, we hope to continue to address those deficiencies. And then based on the reports that Calpers provides the city, uh, we should expect our unfunded liability payments to continue to increase uh, through the remainder of, or through twenty-thirty. Uh, fund transfers, so next category. Um, so I'm proposing, or the finance department is proposing increasing um, the transfers uh, and by four hundred and eighty thousand dollars, um, this would be for the Skywalk project. So part of the Skywalk was funded through the Eureka Lodging Alliance. They agreed to cover six hundred thousand dollars uh, by paying sixty thousand dollars a year for ten years. Um, that is great, but it's also left a hole in this C I P fund. So what I'm proposing is for the general fund to uh, uh, put this fund back into a positive cash position. And then uh, in the future, the general fund would be the recipient of that annual sixty thousand dollar payment. So that full amount will be paid back to the general fund, it'll just take uh, the next eight fiscal years. Uh, and then the other adjustment would be a operating subsidy for the building fund. So uh, in fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, the building fund was able to cover all of their expenses through um, permit fees. So because they had a balanced budget, I don't see a need for a subsidy in fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, so I'm recommending removing that subsidy. And then for other funds, um, this is a little nuanced, but uh, we do receive different funding sources from the state for street projects. Uh, the biggest funder of street projects is the general fund. Um, so we essentially have uh, four different funding sources. Um, to make it easier to bu- uh, budget for projects, what I do is um, rather than having one project um, or project accounts for every fund, I have it in one fu- or the total project in one fund. So that uh, project managers can see their full budget. And then at the end of the year, uh, what I am doing is essentially moving expenses into these other funds for the purpose of reporting to the state. So the state does require us to have separate funds for these sources. So to make it easy uh, and transparent, um, I essentially move portions of those project expenses into these other funds and essentially match um, the monies that we receive from these other sources. And then here we have monies being transferred from uh, water operations to water C I P and wastewater operations to wastewater C I P. Uh, essentially this adjustment just reflects um, actual dollars spent in those C I P funds. So ra- rather than sending additional cash over to the C I P fund, I'm essentially uh, making sure that what was um, what's being provided from the operating fund is exactly what was spent. So conclusion, uh, recommendation, uh, number one, receive report on the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three budget review. Uh, number two would be to appropriate in the current fiscal year seventy-five thousand dollars for the twenty-twenty-four participatory budget program. And then approve the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three budget adjustments for fund transfers.
Do we have any questions? Yeah, Councilmember Bauer.
Uh, thank you, uh, Director Merlau for the report. Um, oh, I, I mean, maybe these questions are silly, but um, so the, the transfer between other, I think the harbor fund and um, I think there's one other transfer we make. Um, what is it? Oh, the building fund we're doing, so the, the operating subsidy, do you ever see that changing? You know, you see them getting up and, and generating enough revenue?
Um, I don't want to make predictions, but I think the building fund, uh, this isn't, to me, it doesn't seem like a one-time thing. It seems like it's, it's recovered really well and should continue to um, essentially balance the revenues to the expenses in that fund. Um, and then the harbor fund, uh, that's not a large gap, so I think um, we might not be able to eliminate it in any one fiscal year, but I think over time, um, I do expect that to go to zero as well.
And if I could add to that too, the, the um, subsidy part of that, that um, Lane, uh, Director Merlau was alluding to was much more significant than that. We did a study, um, I think twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen. A lot of that gap had a lot to do with the way that we were allocating our funds for staff. Um, uh, Director Merlau made some changes associated with that because a lot of the work that the harbor staff do is more general fund related. So that alleviated a lot of that subsidy years back. And going forward, um, and I think that I agree with Director Merlau that after a certain period of time, we will be able to mix that, fix that gap because the study that we did showed how a lot of the properties that we own, that we lease, um, are all part of the, the waterfront, one of those fishermen's terminal, uh, uh, E D A plant. The different properties that we own were well below market rate. And so over the last few years, to help with that subsidy is we're trying to get those back up to market rate. We're about to get another lease that's going to be going out for where fish, where England Marine used to be. So those type of things that have been in ten-year leases with five-year renewal periods, a lot of those are coming up. And when those come up, once we get those into market rate, I think that that will help a lot with that subsidy and hopefully take that subsidy away similar to building.
All right, thank you. One more question and then I'll pass the torch. Um, the P G and E rates. I know we have, what we have, I don't know how well-funded, if we still have the utility assistance program? We still doing that?
We believe we've exhausted those funds that we use to decide, but that could be, I, I'm not sure, we did that as part of participatory budgeting. I know that you, the utility component was a lot more heavily used than the rental component. We had to allocate some money from the rental into the utilities. I'm not sure what the balance of that is though, but another opportunity to continue that would be the participatory budgeting.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking of. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? At this time? No? Anybody from the public want to comment on this item? Oh, saying no one, we'll bring it back to council. Oh, we do have one on Zoom. Thank you. I can't see you on Zoom.
Thank you for uh, taking my questions. Um, in the budget, it mentioned about uh, cer- cost for services. I'm just wondering about the uh, is, is that what you call for administrative fees? I know I can't ask the question, but um, I, I'm just trying to find if someone can confirm the difference between administrative fees, if that's what that is. And um, the cost of doing, during the job, I mean, I, I, I don't, I, I think I see that as double dipping, but that's just my take on it. And um, another uh, concern I, or question or issue I was wondering about was with all the construction going on, does the city have any um, is, funding allocated for the lighting around the city of Eureka? Um, I noticed that the bus, the city bus doesn't run pat, when it's dark outside. And just in walking down the streets in, in Eureka, some neighborhoods are dark. And I'm just wondering, do you plan to add lighting? Is there money in the budget for that? Street lights? Um, that's just my comment.
Thank you, Latonya. Would you be willing to email those to Director Merlau?
Direct- Sure.
Thank you, or you could just send them to the clerk and we can get them to Director Merlau and get you the answers you were asking. Okay, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, do you see anyone else on public comment?
I see no one else.
Okay, so seeing no one on public comment, let's bring it back to council for comments or a vote to receive the report. Anyone? Everyone? Councilmember Castellano.
Sure. Okay, again, um, thank you for the report and also um, well done in terms of, you know, kind of forecasting the budget and, and being uh, on point. Um, I do have, sorry, a quick question about the, the Skywalk fund. Um, some of that money that we're putting back into the fund, is that because we're anticipating uh, further development? Developments or programming along the Skywalk? The four hundred and eighty thousand?
No, so if you looked at that fund, you would notice a cash deficit of about four hundred and eighty thousand. So um, rather than have to explain that to the auditors every year, I'm gonna
Okay, okay.
Cover it, or yeah, um.
That makes sense.
So yeah, when, when the Lodging Alliance is both Humboldt and um, Eureka Lodging Alliance, they initially um, uh, donated one point five million and then we had a gap once all the design was in, it was six hundred thousand. So we went and amended the M O U that we had with them to get six hundred thousand over a ten-year period, so
Yep.
He figured he'd just pay that off now and then as that sixty thousand comes in annually, it would just go back into the general fund.
Great. I knew about the paying it off, but I just didn't quite understand, so that, yeah, accounting for the deficit makes total sense. Um, and I'm excited to do participatory budgeting again, so thank you for bringing that forward. Um, is that, maybe I'll just make a motion uh, to or what?
Staff recommendation.
Yeah, staff recommendation.
A second. Okay, so we have a motion, a second. We have Councilmember Fernandez who has some comment.
Sure.
Didn't you have your hand up?
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, I'm, I'm, I'm grateful that we get to do the participatory budgeting again and I understand the concerns that we have with not wanting to spend the entirety of our modicum of a surplus here, given anything that may happen that's unforeseen, along with any of the other prevailing issues we have coming up next year. I'm, I'm just curious why uh, we're sticking with the seventy-five thousand and not maybe bumping it up a little bit for this next year as well.
Um, I, I just kind of went with the, the amount of the appropriation in twenty, uh, twenty-twenty-three. Um, I, we can adjust the recommendation as
Yeah, it can be adjusted. I mean, like Councilmember Castellano had said, you know, Director Merlau has done a really good job of projecting and where we're at. Um, fortunately, that's been the case. Um, it could go the other way around and doing that could end up being at a disadvantage for next fiscal year. But if council um, chose to try and add to that within reason, um, that's council's decision. You'll have to amend the motion, obviously.
Right, I, I mean, would either of you be okay with a reasonable increase to a hundred thousand? At least what I consider to be reasonable?
How do you feel about that, Director Merlau? Do you feel like that is reasonable or unreasonable?
It's reasonable. I mean, the only, so seventy-five thousand dollars does uh, divide into five well. That's my only recommendation is, I mean, it, it, it's reasonable.
It's reasonable. All right, so we have a motion, we have a second, we have a potential amendment to that motion.
Ninety, how about ninety?
I haven't heard it either.
If you want to make a friendly amendment.
I'd rather go up than down, so.
Oh, I guess on the second, I'd be okay with that friendly amendment of increasing it from seventy-five thousand to a hundred thousand.
Okay, and I heard Councilmember Castellano say ninety, so. Hang on just a second. So we've also got, while you guys are deliberating over here in your brains, uh, Councilmember Contreras Deloche.
Yeah, I, I just, I'm wondering if you guys could um, explain your reason for wanting that to be increased.
I think it'd largely be coming from me if that were the case. And so um, just with the, the increase that we've seen overall, I mean, this was largely used, I believe, for rental assistance and utilities assistance, largely, not solely, correct?
If you combine the two, um, I think it was thirty-five and thirty-five and then it was fifteen for the flashing crosswalk and the remainder for the intersection um, painting, so. Um, yeah, of those four projects, the rental and utility assistance were the great of it. But I mean, that was solely based on the process, um, that we're not going to tell them that those same categories are going to be with those same categories. They could choose to build a mini Skywalk in a park if they chose to.
As long as it meets within a hundred thousand.
So it could be, it doesn't, it's not necessarily going to be like that, it could be just anything, okay?
All right, so we've got a motion, we've got a second, we've got Councilmember Castellano.
Um, question, uh, the utility program received a lot of use. Um, are there, are there still people using it pretty frequently? Um, have we expi- expended the funds? Are there other opportunities that you might foresee for utility assistance?
You know, that'll be an option when we go through the process. We're, we're likely going to follow the same process that we did previously. Um, so there's an opportunity for that. I know from what was allocated originally, there's not any more money left in the utility fund because we had to supplement that thirty-five thousand with dollars with some of the rental. Now, if there's any leftover in either of those, I'm not sure, there may be a small amount left over. But if that process results in the same, um, you know, rental assistance or utility assistance, that'll, whatever's allocated by the group. We don't know if we're going to, we're hoping that we get the participation level and we're gonna lean on you guys to reach out to your wards so that we can have a more clear delineation between the wards so that we can get, and I know that um, Councilmember Fernandez and Contreras Deloche, I don't believe are here when we started that process, but what we initially had planned on doing is saying, okay, we have X amount of dollars. Split that up against wards and then you, you request participation from the community members from each ward. And each ward decides on what to do with their allocation. And I think we intend on it, but because we didn't have equitable participation of community members, we kind of just combined that process into one overall process.
Right, and if I understand when, sorry, if I, yeah, uh, when that process was being determined, there was also the opportunity for, you know, if things had worked out the way that they were planned, uh, the participants would have gotten a hundred dollar gift card, I'm not sure for what or for where, but that was
That's, that would be included in that, we would continue to do that. Was it a hundred? How much was? How much was it?
I believe it was 100. It didn't come out of the...
It didn't come out of the 75,000, it was an additional. But that would be the intent for this as well.
Okay.
I have two questions. The first is, how long has that been going on? And can you tell me, like, what some of the previous? Because, you know, if it's rental assistance and utility assistance, I feel one way. If it's a miniature Skywalk or a clown show, I feel a different way. So I, could you tell me kind of like, give me a background a little bit on kind of previous things?
It was the first year that we did the project. It was brought up during, I don't know if it was strategic visioning or the budget process, but I think it was strategic visioning. It was modeled off of a much smaller version that Arcata had done and off of other communities' participatory budgeting. And we kind of morphed that with a consultant. We'd plan on doing this in-house with just staff going forward because we're familiar with it and we got a lot of feedback on the previous process. But that was the first time Arcata had done it for the Valley West area for 15,000 dollars. And that was it. And so we did something similar, but tried to split it up in the wards and it morphed after that.
Thank you.
Sorry, you answered not quite the question I had, but that's okay. I don't think my question was clear. And that's just, I was wondering in terms of the utility subsidy, if there's opportunities outside of participatory budgeting to fund something such as that. For instance, you know, we could look at this now and make a recommendation to keep participatory budgeting the same and, you know, put 25,000 dollars and do a utility program. I mean, you know, if we've already seen that be successful in the community, we don't necessarily have to wait for people to later say, we still want to see that successful thing that we trialed.
So that was modeled and the idea kind of came up through COVID. Because when COVID was here, we used some of that ARPA money for that purpose. And so if there's funding sources similar to that, PLHA may be one that could potentially be used for rental or utility assistance, which is the permanent local housing money that we get that's non-competitive that currently we've put into the ADU financing program. But that could be another source of funding that could be used for that type of program outside of the participatory budgeting program.
I don't have a vote. However, if I did have a vote, can I say if I did have a vote, what I would vote? If I did have a vote, I too would take, I would keep participatory budgeting the same. And I would try and figure out ways to create programming, whether that be utility, I mean, because they're going up. The PG&E is going up tremendously, so is water and all of these things. So I would like to see us have more opportunities for our community members that way. And the participatory budgeting could be for like amazing things, like miniature Skywalks and stuff like that.
Well, I mean, that's kind of the point of the participatory budgeting is that they're making that recommendation, they're making that decision.
But if they don't have that on the table, if we've already got that taken care of, then they'll be able to use those funds for other things. And it'll be different from last year. That's just my opinion. I don't have a vote.
So just to be clear, currently right now, I will double check with Housing Specialist Raymond, but I'm pretty sure there's some money left in that fund. So it may be available right now. The PLHA, a decision on that funding will not be made by council prior to this participatory budgeting process.
Yeah, I mean, I would be fine keeping the appropriation where it's been recommended if we were to put together a program like what's being conveyed for utilities or rent.
So can I just say that if we were going to do that, I would, I would want it to be separately agendized.
Okay.
I don't want to get too far afield from what's been agendized tonight. So if you want us to think about that and bring it back at a future time, that's, that's fine. You know, we can, we can look into that and bring it back. You know, but tonight's...
I was gonna say, we currently have a motion on the table with a second. And, no, the friendly amendment was not.
Sorry.
Yeah, as far as I can tell, the, the motion and the second currently is staff recommendation.
Staff recommendation.
Yeah.
So no more comments or questions, let's vote. Shall we?
Unanimous yes vote, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Sorry, I responded to the amendment. I was thinking he had made the, sorry, I got switched up.
All right, so...
You did not make the motion, yes. I'm clear now, thank you.
We will move on now to, thank you, Director Millar, that was wonderful. We're going to now move on to our ambassador program report with Project Manager Davis. Are you with us, Project Manager Davis?
Hello.
Hello, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Staff has prepared a ambassador program report. And if I could please share my screen.
Go for it.
Is that the wizard?
All right, can everyone see the screen?
Yes.
All right, excellent, thank you.
Try again. We see you, Jeff.
Oh, no.
You look very jazzy. Hi, we still see you. There we go. Now we see.
All right, the PowerPoint, not me?
We see you both, actually.
All right, well, I'll, I'll run with that.
Okay.
Here is the, our staff has prepared an ambassador program report. So community ambassadors have, there's a variety of different programs that are out in several communities throughout the state and the nation. There's an overall trend or overall kind of similarities between these programs where it really engages and empowers individuals within a community to act as representatives, advocates and facilitators. And, you know, successful programs involve training, ongoing support and clear communication channels. And really, the structure and the scope of these ambassador programs are tailored to the unique characteristics and needs of a particular community so that flexibility is really beneficial for a successful program. So one example is the San Francisco Community Ambassador Program that was created back in 2010. And this program is really, was, was designed for community safety and as a neighborhood engagement program, really focusing on having, providing a clear, visible, non-law enforcement safety presence. It's been a successful program and they have expanded throughout the city of San Francisco. And they offer quite a few different services for the, the community. A little closer to home, the Arcata Community Ambassador Program was implemented back in 2022 with really a focus on community safety and beautification. And I was able to speak with staff from the, from Arcata. It's run through their police department. And it really has kind of evolved and really is focusing currently on beautification and more of like social services and connecting community members to, to, to resources. And I think one of the biggest takeaways of all the conversations and meetings with, with the staff from Arcata is it's really having the people, the right people in those positions. And it's really the ambassadors themselves that make a successful program. And so here's a brief, the mission of the Arcata Ambassador Program. And the thing overall, the, the community has benefited from this program quite a bit. The businesses, especially around the plaza in the downtown area, are very supportive of this program. And this program was designed and implemented utilizing ARPA funding, grant funding, that I think now going forward in 2024, the city of Arcata is going to have to figure out a way to, of paying for this outside of that, that ARPA funding. I think they're talking about maybe taking it to the voters and getting a measure to fund that position going forward. So currently, the city of Eureka doesn't have the sort of program in its budget. And staff has, has developed a pilot program that would start with a volunteer pool and really utilize volunteers on a pilot basis to start this program up. And I just want to take a moment to highlight some, the current volunteer opportunities here in the city of Eureka. And I want to give a shout out to Community Services, Project Manager Robin Prasker, who's overseeing the Empower Eureka Program. It's a wonderful program. It's a great resource to connect community members wanting to volunteer with, with a large variety of volunteer opportunities here, here in Eureka. The Emergency, the Weather Overnight Center is kind of the latest of these. And it has, we've had over 100 folks volunteer for this program already. So there are folks out there that are really eager to volunteer for a variety of different programs. Some of the other programs include the Uplift Eureka Copilot Program, which really does provide a little bit of social services. It's kind of a helping hand program to help folks obtain some of their goals. And another one in the public safety realm is the Eureka Volunteer Patrol, which is a very successful program run through the Eureka Police Department that is doing some, some great things. Neighborhood beautification is also another opportunity that folks here in Eureka have. And if you're looking for volunteer opportunities outside of just, you know, city of Eureka programs, that website, empowereureka.org, can connect you with, with quite a few other volunteer opportunities. And so with all that being said, I think moving forward, staff has began to design a program, a volunteer program called the Old Town Stewards, which would be an ambassador program here in Eureka that would really focus in Old Town Eureka and Downtown Eureka with, with volunteers. And this is a very strong collaboration between the Eureka Visitor Center, Eureka Main Street, the City of Eureka's Economic Development Department. And I know that this is a program that the Eureka Main Street Board has expressed interest in and has expressed some excitement on this type of program moving forward. And it's not just the City of Eureka's Economic Development Program. I know the, the City of Eureka's, the Police Department has showed support for a program like this, especially the Eureka Volunteer Patrol has, has offered up a lot of their training materials. And in addition to EPD, the Community Services Department is willing to help facilitate volunteer recruitment through the Empower Eureka website. And so just a brief overview, these stewards would have quite a bit of training. There's kind of an orientation and ongoing trainings throughout the year to really get folks familiar with the area, learning about the existing local services and resources, all the, the locations. We would, through that training, we would introduce the volunteer stewards to many of the Old Town and Downtown businesses. We would provide and kind of teach the, the volunteers a lot of the historic history of Eureka, the different architecture. The city has run some historic walking tours throughout Old Town over, over the years. There's, there's a lot of information, there's a lot of great, unique buildings out there. Very, very interesting. And then also, the Eureka Visitor Center would invite the volunteers to the quarterly concierge meetings where folks, volunteers would be able to go and visit some of the tourist spots around town, such as the Sequoia Park Zoos, Skywalk, the Maticat and several others. Just so, these volunteers are very well informed and can make recommendations to community members, to, to visitors and anyone they, they come in contact with. There's quite a few goals for this program, but they all kind of fall within these, these, these four main goals, which would be supporting community members, supporting the business community, supporting and informing visitors, and then really providing and enriching experience for volunteers. And like I had mentioned earlier, really what makes a program like this are all the volunteers and the folks that are going to be out there representing Eureka as ambassadors or stewards or as liaisons. And so right now, today, I would, we would love to, staff would love to receive comment. We've began developing some program materials. The next step would be utilizing Empower Eureka to start recruiting volunteers. And staff is confident that we can implement a program like this in its pilot phase pretty rapidly. And then, you know, based on, on the results of that pilot phase, we would be able to either search and secure for some grant funding to expand this program. Or kind of, once we demonstrate success, look at, at other ways to, to really, yeah, expand the scope of this ambassador program. And this is, this was really brought up at the strategic visioning meetings. And I think it'll be something that, that would really enhance and do some community building here in, in Eureka. And that is, that is the brief ambassador program report. And I'm going to stop sharing my screen. I hope, there we go.
Well, thank you, Jeff, or Director Davis. And are there any questions for Mr. Davis? Councilmember Fernandez?
Thank you, Mayor. You, you had talked about discussions being had with Eureka Main Street. Have we had any discussions with Chamber or other business leaders?
At this point, we, we have not. But that would be definitely an organization that we would reach out to and, and involve in this, in this program development, yes.
So we haven't, this is the first presentation of the overall program. We intend on doing that. We have brought this to, and Chamber is aware of this, as far as Director Olson is aware of it.
As, as far as its development?
Yes.
Okay, that's, that's good to know. I appreciate that, thank you. And then you had said that the focus is going to be primarily in, well, predominantly in Old Town or solely in Old Town for it to start. Has there been any consideration for Henderson Center or other areas in Eureka?
Yeah, as the program expands and, yeah, we, Henderson Center is another location that we've looked at. Currently, the Eureka Volunteer Patrol through the Eureka Police Department has kind of a subgroup of folks, they call the walkers, that are down in Henderson Center right now. And we would definitely work with them and supplement the, their presence in Henderson Center. They're doing a fantastic job throughout Old Town and throughout Henderson Center. And we really want to complement and supplement what, what they're doing. So yes, Henderson Center is another location that, that would, you know, once expanding this program, would, would benefit from, from an ambassador-style program.
Okay. And so currently, these, these walkers are the ones that are kind of in Old Town at the, at this point through EPD? Henderson Center, thank you for correcting me.
Correct. Currently, there are, there's a, a small group of, of community volunteers through the, the Eureka Volunteer Patrol. They call themselves the walkers and they are the ones that are currently active down in both Henderson Center and in Old Town Eureka.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any further questions or comments? Councilmember Contreras Deloche?
Well, I'm really excited about this. So I remember in February or whenever it was, that Arcata did a presentation through, was it a Cal Cities Rotation? Councilmember Castellano was at it as well. And they had one of their police officers make a presentation on it and they were talking about how hesitant they were to kind of do it, but that it was just so widely well-received by community members and visitors and, and that the police themselves were getting far less calls over different kind of various minor items. And I just thought, oh, this is like, good, 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 you know? Like, how often do we have like a program where across the board, everybody feels like there's something very beneficial and positive happening here? And so I have wanted that from the moment that we heard about it. So I'm just really excited about it and appreciate staff's work on getting, starting to compile this and getting it ready for us to, you know, put this vision together. And that's, you know, my area. And our businesses down there have been asking for more support and, and also the people that live down there too. And I just think this is just a really great, visible way that that's going to happen for them. So I'm, I'm so excited.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Castellano?
I was curious, refresh me, I'm kind of remembering the San Francisco program.
Downtown street team.
Hires people who have been, you know, maybe experienced impacts of the criminal justice system and maybe uses workforce development funding to help fund that or grants. I was just curious if that is true, if you know or not. I'm just thinking, you know, future funding, it could be an interesting workforce development type of opportunity.
Yeah, you know, I'm not familiar with that particular program. I think that might be different from their ambassador program. That's something that staff can definitely look into while developing this program and seeing if we can, you know, go after those fundings and utilize some of those lessons learned here in Eureka.
Thanks. Councilmember Fernandez?
Thank you again. You had said that the volunteers would receive at least some in-depth training. And could you go a bit more into that and what that might consist of?
Yeah, so, you know, after reaching out to the city of Arcata's community ambassador program, they have, we're very excited that Eureka is looking at implementing an ambassador style program. And they've shared all of their training materials with city staff, as well as the Eureka Volunteer Patrol and the police department, they've shared all of theirs. So we're really kind of compiling a lot of those trainings. But we're also going to be kind of, kind of filling in the gaps, right? We're going to be doing, we're not going to be doing the same exact thing as these other programs. We're going to, it's going to be unique. That's where that flexibility really comes in. And then really, it's going to be highlighting the uniqueness of Eureka and Old Town. Like I had mentioned, there's the, you know, I think these volunteers would be not just informed about kind of what the services and the businesses that are here today, but also the history of the area. So they can share that information with with visitors and with community members. I think they're going to be trained on a variety of things. And it's really going to be left open to the ambassadors, to kind of what their strong suit is. If they really want to focus on one area, if they want to do some beautification, if they want to focus on, you know, outreach, those things. It's just, we really want to help empower those individuals to to give this ambassador program, you know, as a platform. So there's going to be a lot of flexibility. And if they're interested, you know, staff will develop training for, for, you know, whatever they're passionate about. But I think overall, it's just that for this pilot program, at least, just kind of focusing on services, resources, the history, and then really all the wonderful attractions and tourist spots here locally that that make this area so special.
I appreciate your input on that and the potential for these volunteers to have an opportunity to grow into something that they might feel passionate about. I also see the potential here, not necessarily to supplement law enforcement, but to provide that bridge, as you're saying, between the businesses and services that might exist. You know, it's already been stated that we're understaffed. So there's obviously some room there to make things happen while we're trying to work around public safety. So I appreciate the work that you're putting into this.
And I'll just add to the training component of it. And part of that training will be in thanks to council for the past couple of strategic visioning is who to call for those different situations. Sometimes you want to make sure the safety of our volunteers are very important and not having expectations if somebody is into beautification and into litter removal, or, you know, planting plants or doing those type of things that great. But some of them may not, you know, may more be into the social services component or more the docent component for the tourism. We want to make sure that they have access to our Old Town Maintenance Worker, to our Waterfront Trail Maintenance Worker, both of which were allocated by council over the last couple of years, and also have access to CSAT and Uplift and those resources for programming and those type of things. So based on the volunteers' individual, you know, desires, giving them the resources so that if that's not what they're doing, they have the ability to call somebody to make sure that they have the support to cover all of the needs for folks, whether they're tourists or community members or business owners.
Okay. Well, I want to thank you, Project Manager Davis, and just really appreciate, you know, you have a great track record for creating, you know, programs that work in our community and that really lift people up. And I just want to share how much I appreciate that about you. And thank you. Look forward to seeing how this plays out.
Thank you.
So next up is our, what? Future agenda items. Someone has one. Councilmember Castellano?
Well, since it came up in conversation, I think utilities program would be great to bring back to the agenda if folks were interested.
Utilities and rental assistance?
Sure.
Okay.
Utilities and rental assistance.
Okay. All right. And does anyone else have any future agenda items? All right. So with that, we will move on to city manager reports. However, it is 9:27. So if we want to-
I will make it quick, but I do want to, our consultant, Burke Brown, is going to be giving a presentation on 98 Milestones. And I know that Chief Jarvis wasn't here the last time I spoke. I really want to thank him for the service. It's been an honor working with you. I consider you not only a valuable community member here, but I know you'll leave a lasting impression on not only EPD, but our community. So thank you very much and appreciate it and look forward to seeing you where I can take you out to do some real fishing as opposed to on some river. So with that, Burke is here. Welcome, Burke.
Actually, before you speak, Burke, let's have a motion to extend the meeting, please.
Mayor, I'll make the motion to extend the meeting to 10 o'clock in the hopes that we don't have to use all of that.
I like it.
Because then I'll have to do it again.
So we have a motion?
Second.
Thank you. Please vote.
Unanimous yes vote. Motion carries.
Thank you, everybody. And thank you, Burke. Welcome.
Hello, hello. How's everyone doing?
Great.
It's good to see you all. It's great to see you. The big wave from miles. I'm glad to be here. And it's great to hear all of the conversation that's been happening. Project Manager Davis, just to hear the, you know, historic city of the future, seeing some of the things that came from our strategic visioning is extremely exciting because the more that it's talked about, the more that there's a line of narrative, the more real it becomes. And so I'd love to take a second just to share my screen, if that's possible, and just give a brief update. Will not take till 10 o'clock. And just kind of let everybody clap. There it is. Yes, we're all clapping. Let's see if I can do this real quick. All right, let's see. Of course, everything is blanked out. Let me see if this works. Let's try this. Allows him to share. Okay, do you see my screen per chance or no?
No, just you.
Okay. I might need to pop out and pop right back in. Let me do that real quick.
Hi, we see you.
Here I am.
Welcome back.
It's good to be back. All right, is it showing now?
Yes.
Excellent. I'll just go through this real quick. So again, this is, I wanted to circle back on the strategic visioning session that we had. Just a brief overview of what's been done, where things are at, and where we're going. So let's see if this all works. So the intention is always, most of you were there, we had an incredible time with everybody. But to align city leadership departments and allowing everybody to be able to gain clarity on exactly what the next five years, two years, and one year look like, and then moving it down to the milestones, which is the main important topic of tonight. Wanted to be collaborative where everybody could be engaged together and see exactly what it was that they wanted to create and how it resonated with what the community itself desires, and then also define, because without definition, it's very difficult to get to the place that you want to be. So I'm not going to go over this too much, but we start off with the big five-year unifying goal, the bug, the two-year little bugs, the one-year targets, and then the 90-day milestones and reviews to make sure that things are moving forward. It's about that implementation. But again, they say, if you want to get stuff done in the future, it starts with homework tonight. What's the most important thing to be done? That would be the 90-day milestones. And so how do we crystallize something, an idea of what we want, what we see in the next five years, and two years, and one year into what needs to be done in the next 90 days? And this right here kind of talks about what's most important. Define the short-term goals, assign responsibilities, secure the resources, establish tracking, review and adjust. They say plain as 90% of the time off course. It's constantly readjusting to get to where it needs to go. What we came up with were the top priorities or FOGI, in which we wanted to have our initiatives with the strategic visioning. The top in terms of the story house method that we talked about back then was effective governance, economic development, quality of life or health and safety, and community pride, and being able to create a narrative around that and create initiatives that are specific to each one of those projects. So what I want to do real quick is just provide a visual where things are at so far. I was able to meet up with the team in December and just see how things were going in terms of each one of these areas, what is completed, what is in progress, any pending tasks, any limitations that have popped up. And so you can take a look here, the completed tasks with the establishing the budget, creating a list of potential organizers, roundtable meeting with interested organizations, all the way down to the initiative proposals. In progress, you see, we have worked with council to set dates and logistical support for Ward Four and Ward Three. Those are already held already. And then here are the pending tasks that are showing up when it comes to the effective governance and communication. Here it is with the economic development in terms of the 90-day milestones, the tasks that were completed over here on the left, negotiate with business owners, game plan for dumpsters, home key grant applications, draft LEPs on websites, in progress. There's work that's still needing to be done in terms of what has been done, but we still want to have completed as soon as possible. And then the pending tasks on this side. Then move to the quality of life, health and safety on the left. Again, the completed tasks, give you some time to take a look at that. What's in progress? Pending tasks, dependencies, and then limitations. And one of the limitations that I wanted to take a second to discuss or to talk about was the desire to expand the SV capacity. And some of the limitations that occurred were it's not able, the SV cannot be expanded. The building is too old and renovation costs exceed cost of new hospital. There's a license cap for the limited amount of beds that are available. Adding beds would be prohibited. And so these are kind of some of the obstacles that have shown up, which is natural in any type of initiative. There are sometimes things that that make it difficult to move through. However, what you do is you adjust. And so these are some of the adjustments that have been thrown up in terms of how to create that space that still is allowing a space similar to the SV. And so there's a grant for the Triage Center, $12.3 million, expanding crisis alternatives, the forming of the Community Health Department, working with the fentanyl response, and then Narcon or Narcan accessibility. So these are some of the things that are going to be implemented to be able to take advantage of, okay, yes, we do have these limitations, but how do we work around to make sure that we still can expand support in the areas that are needed most? Coming to community pride, the finance availability, generate the fund, incorporate into the 23 and 24 budget, present a budget with council, provide street tree guidelines to California. This is what's in progress. And then here's what's pending. So obviously, what we want to do is be able to make sure that this is continuing to maintain momentum. Here's just some examples, just to provide what has been done when it comes to community pride. The neighborhood naming project outreach, there's been tabling at community events, like the Friday Night Market to engage residents, city hall engagement, online initiatives and activities to gather input, especially from younger residents, working and collaborating with the schools. These are things that have already begun to be in effect, to make sure that there's movement happening on these milestones. And as a simple conclusion, how do we keep momentum? Obviously, we want to continue on with the quarterly meetings to make sure that things are moving forward, the new milestones that happen in the next 90 days. Granted, what happens in the first 90 days and what's expected in the next 90 days, they don't always match. That kind of ties back to what I always talk about with the current reality and the vision. Adjustments need to be made, but we want to continue to develop and achieve the overarching objectives that are moving towards, okay, what we want to do in these 90 days are pushing towards the one-year targets that we've already created and established, and then moving towards those two-year targets to create that ideal five-year big unifying goal that we've already all decided on. Measure progress and course correct, as always, and then just persist on implementation. And ultimately, the most important thing are those quarterly meetings that we're able to have to just say, okay, where are things at? How close are we? What obstacles are showing up? And how do we work around them? How do we get ourselves to this one-year target as quick as possible? And so ultimately, the goal is just to keep momentum. We had such a great experience for those two days for the strategic visioning. What we want to do is just make sure that it manifests when it comes to those one-year targets, two-year bugs, and the ultimate five-year bug. So that is my presentation. Hopefully, you know, it's not 10 o'clock. So I'm glad to be able to just kind of provide a brief update.
Thank you, Burke. Does anybody have any comments for Burke? Councilmember Castellano?
Thank you so much, Burke. It's great to see you, as always. Could we get a copy of that emailed and or have it on the website so that we could share it or look at it? Because there's a lot of information there.
A lot of data.
So yeah, and there's a lot more of that. I sent a spreadsheet with all of it listed out. We can make that available, and we'll put it either online or maybe even talk to about it on social, yeah, social media. We'll make that available. Some of it'll be confusing, but at the same time, we'll make it available.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? It's great to see you, Burke. Thank you for keeping it under 10 minutes. Happy holidays.
Happy holidays. It's great to see every single one of you.
We'll see you next time.
All right. See you later.
Bye-bye. All right. And with that, it's time for council reports. Councilmember Castellano?
Okay. Okay. I attended a Humboldt Transit Authority meeting. If folks haven't checked out the new app and checked out micro transit yet, it's a cool thing and a good time to give it a try. Let's see, I attended the employee, the city of Eureka Employee Recognition Dinner, and congratulations again to all of the employees, and thank you to every employee who's serving our community. I think we were all there. It was great. Let's see, I met with some regional tourism planners to talk about, you know, potentials for tourism opportunities in conjunction with other counties. I attended the Eureka Main Street meeting. The not city council-related, I attended a Cal Nonprofits Policies Symposium and Board Meeting, and I did travel for that. And then I met with our local Coast Guard about some concerns they have in the community about Coast Guard members experiencing microaggressions, aggressions based on race, based on perceptions of difference. And just want to let folks know that it isn't the first time, you know, we've heard about those things in our community. And we take them really seriously. And there will be continued action, working on that.
Thank you. Councilmember Mulson?
Thank you, Mayor. Let's see, I also attended the Employee Recognition Dinner. And it was impressive to see everyone in one big room. Holy cow, what a group. And to watch all the heads of departments come up and recognize their long-term employees and to see how much, how much camaraderie, how much team spirit, how much unified vision there is among everybody that's working at the city. It's no wonder we're making progress because everybody's pushing in the same direction, it seems. I missed the JPA meeting because I had the flu, which is why, and I was unable to talk, even worse than now. even worse than now, but I did watch, and it's good to see that the Fire Department is getting more staff and advancing more staff from within, always love to see the best floating to the top there. And I attended two-by-two with the Chamber of Commerce just this morning, and we discussed lots of things, though we always discuss the health of businesses in Old Town and around all of Eureka. I just, I really enjoy and appreciate their perspectives, and to be able to sit down and hash things out, and just really talk about what's going on, and what everyone's motivations are, and what everyone's desires are, a lot of times, issues can seem very black and white, very this or that, and but once you get people with brains sitting around a table and talking about them, all of those nuances come out, and we realize that we are closer to consensus than it may seem at first glance. So I'm grateful to Nancy and everybody over at the chamber, and that's all I have to report for now, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Fernandez?
Thank you, Mayor, something I had forgotten to report out last time, just because of the gravity of the situation, Councilmember Castellano and myself were able to connect members of Humboldt Palestine with Congressman Huffman and his staff back in November. I, too, was unable to attend the JPA meeting as the alternate, despite Councilmember Moulton reaching out, I was just unavailable that day. Much like the other council members here, I attended the employee recognition, I'm grateful for all our city staff, with their respective years of service, and I'm hopeful that the current staff stay on and continue their service. REDEC will not be meeting this month, as it's right on Christmas Day, as dedicated as we all are as public officials, at least one day off a year sounds agreeable. I'm grateful for the California League of Cities, the Redwood Empire President, Mayor Tammy Trenta Fortuna has appointed me to a one-year term on the Governance, Transparency, and Labor Relations Committee, and orientation is January 4th, thank you.
Congratulations, that's wonderful. Councilmember Bauer?
I, too, attended the Employee Recognition Dinner, and that was a blast, especially seeing, getting the longevity awards, it's great to see people so dedicated to public service, really. Also attended a JPA meeting, and that was always a good time, and I went and saw EPD doing Cram the Cruiser, and I think they collected 400 pounds of food, something like that, it was wildly off, 1,300 pounds of food. And it was great to see them out there, supporting the community and delivering up food to the food bank, and other than that, you know, Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays to everybody, thanks.
Thank you, and before we move on to you, Councilmember Conchares Deloche, I would be remiss to point out, thank you for the reminder, that our own, the voice of Eureka, Pam Powell, Assistant City Manager, IT, this woman has done it all and continues to do so, celebrated, was it three decades? 30 years at the city, we are so appreciative of you. She's amazing, just give her a call, you'll figure that out. Councilmember Conchares Deloche?
Okay, I also attended the Chamber Two-by-Two this morning, it was really, I agree with all of Councilmember Moulton's comments, it was really good meeting. Had the Start Board Meeting, that's the local service that is for children experiencing, well, it goes as young as six, but goes up for children who need wraparound services and help with mental health services. And then I attended the Employee Recognition Dinner, that was so much fun, had such a good time, I feel like I got to know a number of people so much better, including Councilmember Moulton. I went to the Zulights opening thing, and I loved it, so if you haven't gotten to go, go and encourage other people to go, so it was beautiful. I have a field trip in two days that City Manager Slattery is going to help me with, we have a, don't look surprised, we talked about this. We have a 12th grade civics class coming, and I love government, and I love kids, so I think this is going to be a hoot. And then I went to a school board meeting, the school board meeting, and also, oh, I was appointed to the Revenue and Taxation Committee with Cal Cities, which I'm actually really excited about, because I like that stuff. And, oh, and then I joined NALIO, it's a nonpartisan group for Latina and Latino elected leaders, that's it.
Mayor, I forgot something.
Councilmember Moulton?
I'm sorry, you remind, Councilmember Conchares Deloche reminded me, with the change in hands of the Jacob Campus, which is in the middle of the Second Ward, as you know, I'd like to host a town hall for the folks in the neighborhood, so we can talk about what we would like to see there, we can, you know, the public is in control of what can and can't be built in different zoning areas, so I just wanted to mention it now in case, I want to do this as soon as possible, there was a survey that's many, many years old now, and I'd love to get an idea about what is top of people's minds, so you can keep an eye on the, we'll probably put it on the City of Eureka website, I also have Facebook and Instagram and an email list, you can find me pretty easily, or email me at my city address, and I'll make sure you find out when that is, and you can come and have your voice heard about what's going to happen on Eureka's largest parcel of open land. Thank you, that's all.
Thank you, Councilmember Moulton. Councilmember Fernandez, did you also forget something?
No, no, I'm just glad to hear that in lieu of a two-by-two, we can just attend their meeting and make comment instead, so, thank you. Oh, yeah, at the Eureka City Schools.
Because it's not televised, you'd have to go in person.
Well, it'd be easier if they met with us, but.
Okay. With that, we're going to say this, we're going to say, happy holidays, we're so glad you're all a part of our community, enjoy your season, don't drive drunk, and-
Shop local.
Shop local, big time, yeah, you saw our Finance Director's presentation, shopping local is beneficial to all of us. I was going to say, this is Kim Bergel, I'm out, but that's the wrong thing, wrong place. Good night, all.